We call the July 17th Commissioner meeting to order. I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Good morning, everybody. Public comments, anybody?
I do have a question about this. Is this for everybody or is this who signed up for it?
Well, you were supposed to RSVP, yeah.
Yeah, see, I don't think I signed up for that. So is this the last?
I mean, I'm sure you can stay.
I know, I might be able to stay for some, I don't know that I can stay for all.
Okay.
But when I saw that, I remember, if I remember correctly, he had came in here and kind of told us about this, and then I think everyone got emails for an invite.
Right.
I think that's about it.
Right, which they came out last week.
Yeah, and see, I don't think I RSVP'd that I was going, but I might be able to stay for some.
Roll call by all commissioners present, Michelle Morris County Clerk. Additions, deletions to the agenda. I know this Venice issue, it will be a little changed, but it's still there.
Are they coming today?
Yes. Anybody else? Do we have anything else, nothing, no one?
All right, good, anybody get anything from Venice or just what we got from Josh?
Just what we got from Josh was all I had. Oh, sorry.
I got, Josh sounded as if they had another idea or something.
Yeah, yep. So if there is nothing to add or delete, I will motion to approve the regular meeting agenda for July 17th. Motion's been made second and all in favor. Aye opposed, motion carries. Let's, meeting minutes, we'll go ahead and take some time to review those. We've got a little time. Yeah? I just, I guess it's just throwing me off because it's so big. We should be having her right in front of us swearing her in. Laura, would you like to come up here in front and center? We're gonna just kind of make an announcement and introduce you to everybody watching on TV land, because as you know, we're live now. And so I'm sorry, what is your last name?
Hawkins.
Laura Hawkins, okay. So everybody watching, this is Laura Hawkins, she's our new county treasurer, the camera's right there.
Okay.
Welcome to the county. We're excited to have you. Lot of work to do here, so it's gonna be fun.
We'll work together with it and take it day by day and work with the past as we go.
What's a little bit about you for people watching? A little bit of your history.
Well, I'm married, be thirty-three years at the end of this month. I have five kids, seven grandkids, I've, we have our own business. It's Whitehead Dairy's livestock. I worked in the county courthouse in Coffee County for nine, excuse me, for nine and a half years, and I had a group daycare preschool for thirteen and a half years, and went to Allen County College, got an associate's degree, went to Emporia College, Emporia got a Child Development Association degree, so... And we did taxidermy, we had a taxidermy business for twenty-some years, so we've dealt with several businesses and others, and then I've had other jobs as well, you know, but those are just filtered in.
Very good.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yep, welcome Laura.
Thanks.
Thank you for being on the spot like that.
Is that your number or does that's what I have?
Okay.
If not, I can change it. Okay, so if you don't get that message, I sent a test message.
Okay. I'll check on it, thanks.
That's what I was gonna mark, let's need to put his name in there. [coughs] Clean like that. And we head two, three. We're gonna have to go over them again.
This was not, you know, my zero.
Yeah.
If I take out the telemarked, if you can go on the table, some of those are myself, they're spotted out with the numbers. Yeah, I don't, I'm not understanding anything on this.
Right. I get all kinds of stuff too.
That might be part of my fault because I time called you.
That's all right, I mean, that's what it is.
No, I, I, I said it the one, that's, yeah, that's, I don't know what we're hoping to mention. Kevin, honestly, you have a lot of work you do here for us today?
Yes, I have a PO. I have a PO.
He's under, we can prove under staff, of course. We gotta remind you though, Thursday's cutoff day.
Are you doing addition from the collections to the agenda?
Well, everything's already done.
We did all.
We got four emails now, that's four.
You got them now.
There's a note.
All from the people up there.
Yeah. Did you get through it? Find anything?
Uh, just a couple little things I have some questions.
Yeah. So, under public comments, states he was followed, we need to put his name. And then also, at the ten AM mid-states company quarry, that should be resolution eleven dash zero three and zero nine dash zero six. And then on the back page, third point down, Josiah states we should put his full name as well.
Do you know who it is?
Are you talking about the one as well?
Stankey, yeah.
Joe Stankey.
Joe Stankey.
Joe Stankey.
Is that their plan, I couldn't imagine.
Right, S.T.E.I.N.K.E., I believe. And then that, that was it. Did you have something other than that Heather?
Just a couple things, we're talks, says Heather Gruder wants to lay out of each position's pay scale. I would just, on there, I think we talked about a classification system and a graded pay scale, so if we want to say that. And then the other one, on the purchase of the vehicles, the first purchase order was for the Durango Pursuit, the amount of fifty-two, and then the second one says amount of fifty-three, seven seventy-five for two. So is he buying two of those for total of fifty-three, seven seventy-five, or is that each?
No, it should be one. Good catch.
So it's one vehicle?
Right, because we approved the two POs, they purchased two vehicles, and one was fifty-two and one was fifty-three.
Okay, so just, so just take out the word two.
Right. Change that to one. Motion to set the Monday, July tenth, meeting minutes with changes. Motion's been made second and all in favor. Aye opposed, motion carries.
There you go. There's a lot of minutes.
It was a lot of minutes.
Since we have fifteen minutes, you want to present your PO, and then Kevin will get you to present yours as well. Copy paper. I will move to approve purchase order number three eight three four, in the amount of six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, to be paid fifty percent from the treasurers, fifty percent from motor vehicles for copy paper. Motion's been made second and all in favor. Aye opposed, motion carries. Hope not.
If so, I'll seize.
Another tree. Hi Josh.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you sir?
Doing well.
Good.
If you have a space, I could use a ten-minute executive session, so.
Okay, put you under executive session.
You got a four-minute special?
If possible, if not, no problem, it's just a little less.
Mr. Coe, would you join us? We may be able to hit that.
Pure tiger.
Three bids in here. Sweet. There's just three bids. That's business.
All right.
I sold double the amount of chemicals last month than what I did last year.
Double rope.
What's the reason for that?
Good, good spring conditions.
Yeah.
Water days without any wind. Everything's growing real good.
It is, yeah.
Time to give it.
Did you get your, I know you were talking about maybe needing another computer and getting internet, have you done any of that?
I haven't done any of that yet.
Okay.
I will motion to approve PO number three eight three six, for the nox, to be paid from the noxious weeds fund, in the amount of six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for tires. Sorry. Motion's been made second and all in favor. Aye opposed, motion carries. Make sure she gets her copy.
We have one other issue I'd like to bring up while I'm here. My air conditioner went out in my office two weeks ago. I'm kind of having an issue finding one that will fit in the hole because it's cutting the block.
Right.
So I gotta get some mesh, it's out. Doing a lot of extra work so I can get some mesh out.
We talked about, we talked about that very central part of that, always maybe I'll put that out.
Might make time. Yeah, that's what I do. Let's see if you can't get some bids to do that, so right now's a good time.
Okay.
Thanks sir.
Good, thank you.
Did you get signed up for that CIC training?
No, I haven't yet, but I do want to do that.
Did you get the email with the name on that, because I think she had sent it out to all the directors.
You've wanted that financially, you said Josh.
And you can do it in person or remote, I'm guessing with the B just one or two modules, she probably just wanted to remote. But you don't have internet down there yet?
Yes.
You have internet, okay, then you should be able to do it then. I don't know how much will be applicable to you yet, but at least it will give you an introduction to what might be available in the system.
True.
Hopefully you get that, so, yeah, if you need that reset.
Okay, I do have that.
Yeah, I think if you scroll to the bottom, there's the little.
Yeah, I definitely need to do that.
At this time, I will motion to go into a ten-minute executive session under attorney-client privilege for legal advice with all three commissioners and Josh and I. Motion's been made second and all in favor. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Five minutes.
James. So, she will go through. Really, who's the? A lot of time. I don't know. She.
I do agree on my thoughts. All the way, Kaden, to say. To bring back the name of Christ, asking him. I think I have a nice, pretty nice. She would come to me. And I do, I do. I'm trying to come down. Yeah, there's something.
It's, I mean, just. I'm. That's just. That's just. Twenty-three. I was.
I'm sorry. Yes. I know. I want to be able to ask. I'm very, very. I feel. It's tiny, and we start. Lots of things, sometimes. So, isolation, sometimes, again.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes. Yeah. Well, it's all, so, you know. She says, we're gonna say. I'm coming. This is a call. I can't. I'm gonna. She, she. You're looking around. I'm watching. I'm seeing. I think you can hear. So, you're gonna try to. Because I'm sorry. It's, it's. Too bad you didn't. I just don't know. I don't know. Because it's. Oh, yeah.
She did. She was always talking about. I was called. Something she, she. So, I was surprised. I was, I was. I don't know. I don't know. She, she says, but one of them, you know, three teams.
She's still kind of.
Yeah, and she was. She's. I was supposed to. I was also having sex, and she can see. So, for that. She's. So. She. They were, they were back to. The thing on what she worked at, so.
I don't know.
Yeah. No. Well, we're, we're. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Yeah.
I just. I just. If the wishes. So, I think you believe. So, I'm. You can do a bunch of different. I love to do a bunch of different. And so, maybe you would. On the top of. You use your software. For most of your codes. You're still have to buy. I don't know. To become a true. So, and then they will take. I don't know. I have a third. I don't know. Talking. To tell. You want to be able to track. We want to be able to track. People checking out. We want to be able to track. And we want to be able to keep them. And correct. Those kinds of things. I can. I don't ask that. There's different things that you. My. You could be a pro. But I would do. We would be there. And. I see. I wish I was. I will be there. Um, to help those. Instead of you. But you could do. Oh, I'm gonna be through. If you have anything, you can send me. Yeah, I just, I can send you my salespeople. And then you.
One minute.
I should be coming. They should. I have. Yeah. We taxes. If it's. If it's not. Well, I don't think. I don't know. Just track of your assets. I just. And so. That's great. You're checking out. You're sending it. You're just. I would have. I'm sorry. To. At least. This is. You should let me go through the, the loading stuff. Well, since I've been worrying and died, they extended things and I felt like we needed to track serial numbers. So, it was like that. And you. All the equipment that we have to do. You only have to do the location. You have this printer and that laptop and all that stuff. Is there a setup? The works, so like if there's something that needs a change. Oh, nice. Or something else in the works. Um, you can, kind of stuff in there. You can track your serial, serial numbers if you want to. How to. It's just.
Scan. Can you scan it? Tell it that it's. Inducted and it's. Correct. Sure. Time's up.
Yeah. Yeah, you can set it. You can set it to set the works. So, say there's something that needs to be. You have to do so often. Whether it's needing anything or not, and you want to put annual maintenance on a piece of equipment. And then you can do that. Well, it's great.
Sorry.
Yes.
No. No action taken in executive session. Thank you all for your patience. Okay. Scott Lloyd. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. You know, you recognize. And Jean's, sorry.
You're fine.
American, American commission about passed out there today when I walked in like this.
Really?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Some days, you just gotta do what you gotta do.
Okay.
Uh, did you get the email? Uh, did you get the email with the, the, oh, you printed it out. Right?
So, I don't know.
No, I just, I sent yours. I just. There you go.
Come on.
You've got yours. Okay. Um. So, what we have here, uh, we are getting closer on numbers. Uh, Carlotta was gone for weeks, my staff, so. We, we don't have the number, numbers totally finalized for twenty-two, but I think. I don't know how much you've looked at this, but this sheet.
Well, I just got this morning at six forty, so.
No, that's what we're going through.
Oh, okay, so, no, I.
No, you're not. You don't have, no, no, no. I sent it to you because I knew you wanted electronic.
That's right.
So, what, what we're doing today is this is the sheet that, um, Heather had asked to have probably when she started after because of the way the system kicks out. So, I just, we just keep updating it. So, what this is to bring you up to date, Les. On the left is four columns of history. So, you have twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Twenty-twos on this part of the twenty-two, I think, is probably pretty accurate. It's like the departments by line item. So, it'd be everyone. And I was, I was just planning on starting at the top and working our way down. So, then, on I, it's the average of those four columns. Okay, so like, if you look at I, uh, that'd be the average of the last four years. Then what was adopted is K in the twenty-three budgets, that'd be last year's budget. Then I, I just got, um, Michelle was able to get me, or Melinda and Michelle, was able to get me column M. I just dropped those in on, um, Friday. And that would be year-to-date of, I don't know, that was then, we got through. The checks on the first week in July, I think that's what it was, yeah. So, that'd be through checks. It'll be fifty percent. So, so you just look down through there and you go, oh, fifty, like commissioners. Hundred thousand, three hundred is your budget for twenty-four, the way it was turned in. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, twenty-three's budget was a hundred, three hundred, and it's forty-nine, six, so we're, we're right at fifty percent. Then, uh, the unencumbered cash is the part that, because what happens. With twenty-three, the twenty-two, and that's what we're auditing right now, trying to get that fin, fi, finished. Is there were some twenty-one entries that CIC told them to post a certain way, and that wasn't quite right. So, we're trying to straighten out the twenty-one entries so we can get the twenty-two unencumbered cash. That's the part of the twenty-two I don't feel comfortable about with until we get those figured out with CIC in that. So, what those columns L and O are is, would be the unencumbered cash at the end of each fund. So, you'll see like the top one here is the general fund. Every department in the general fund will be this top part, and then we'll go through each fund down below that. Then the P, what, how this was used in the past was P was just because the department heads turned in in. Okay, department head, budget. And I've got those, you know, that's what we're planning on going through today is looking at what the department heads turned in. And then that column P is what you as a commission says. We feel like that's what the budget should be. Okay? Now, that's without knowing the cash carryover, you know, some of those things you need to know in the budget. That's where we're, that's where we're at. And, uh, so, I was just, unless you all want to do something diff, I mean, do it a different way. I was just planning on starting at the top on column N. And looking at the history and, uh, twenty-two, looking at the twenty-three budget. And we just plow through this this morning to see what you, we have not talked, I think the last meeting, uh, Les was gone. And, um, we just didn't have, I didn't feel good about the twenty-two numbers yet. But I think at least we've got column H, which is the expenditure side. Because when you write checks, and those all got posted to the general ledger, and they should have got posted directly. When a check's written and you sign off, it should have, CIC and all that. I think that part is accurate. And that's what we're looking at here.
Okay.
So, once I get these, then what I would do is I would go in and put column P in the budget and then get the cash carryovers. Now, in the past, uh, you all can tell me this too, now that you're on your list, but you three, we come up with the numbers. A lot of, in the past, I've always come up with the numbers except for personnel services. Because now, I, I think here, some turned in maybe a raise in their line item, some didn't. Uh, so, you need to tell me how you want to handle that. I just put it in the way they had it. But the, the challenge with that is if some put it in at twenty-five cents an hour, fifty cents an hour, three percent, five, you know. That's why I've never, I've just always worked all the other numbers until I get to personnel services. And then, like in Pratt, uh, they wanted me to go through then now and calculate what three percent and five percent were on the payrolls for each department. So, they can decide if that's really what they want to do. So, you need to, you guys need to tell me how you want to do that part. Can't remember what we did, uh, I mean, I, I think we. Uh, it's just hard when every, some put a dollar in. I mean, it's just hard when everybody. Yeah, some put two dollars. So, that's, that's just hard to know how you want to handle that, you know, if we, if we allow that. Because then every one of those budgets, personnel services line is going to be done a different way.
So, the input. I usually prefer a percentage.
Mm-hmm.
But I try to research cost of living.
Mm-hmm.
And base it off of that. So, I typically. Hey, no mind.
Okay. Okay.
You guys think?
Well, I think last year, we did, and it's like, yeah, I think this year, there's already some that they're expecting, so I don't know if, uh. I think we look at the budget where we're at and then we figure out how much money we got that we can do raises. There's no money that we've got.
And then just make sure that if you decide, let's just say you decide a percentage, it makes sure that every personnel service line item has enough capacity to be able to honor that for the number of employees that are in that, in that department.
Right.
Okay.
Which we wouldn't know that until we had those numbers.
That's right, yeah. Okay, do you want to just dive in then, starting at the, with the commissioners, you just up to you guys first and you're third? Tell me what to put in column P as you guys discuss it. I don't.
Well, those ones are pretty easy because we don't have a lot of stuff to do.
Okay, so.
You got wages and you got a little bit of contractual commodity.
So, just to, to show you, like, uh, if you look at column H, I'm, I'm not sure, it must have been in one, either the contract services or commodities, but it's a little bit over the budget, I think.
I guess that would probably have been code.
I've got twenty-twos.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking at? Because the.
Twenty-twos, one oh one, two sixty-five.
Is over the.
It's over the twenty-two budget.
Yeah. So. Personnel was over and contractual was over.
Yeah.
So, just check the personnel you got from your court, what it is, talk it through it up. Exactly. That's, uh, because it's not less than.
I guess I was asking that, I didn't know if you changed. What happens sometimes with the commission when they have a new commission? They'll do something differently, whether they pay the contract services different or they add, uh, accounts like, uh, at Pratt, they added about, it was quite a bit of money into the contract services line because of another attorney they had to hire with the situation they got on. So, that's what you never, I never know, you know, what, uh, it's, uh, over, um, uh, HR. There's some HR stuff, their, uh, hourly rate and some stuff they're dealing with. They, they're trying to put a policy, a, um, HR manual together, so their contract net. So, they pay a lot of their contract services like that out of the commission budget. So, there'd be things like that, that if you're going forward and you're wanting to do certain, you know, certain things, you may have to hire somebody like that. So, that's, that's why I'm just bringing that up. I mean, we can just put, we can just put the one hundred, uh, three over, just move the same budget over there because it's probably not, we can double-check it with Michelle, but make sure, uh, make sure that personnel services is the same.
There are, there are situations where individual departments face situations. Are not necessarily covered by insurance because you're not strictly affiliated.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if you would anticipate those contractual services being worn by the individual department or if there's just a kind of a general fund.
Probably in the past, um. Those probably got paid out of the department, but I, I don't know that. I'm not sure.
I mean, I know we've had at least two or three different firms, not the, or the back sale.
Mm-hmm.
That are servicing various parts of the county functions.
Mm-hmm.
It was, just mentioning that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not necessarily the county commissioner only consideration.
The, for me, the difficulty is not having the chart of accounts that we talked about last year.
Yep.
So, it's hard to see on the contractual services where we're over by, we, we spent a hundred and fifty-three percent. But we don't know where we spent it. So, if you have the chart of accounts and you kind of see something jumped from the previous year, you could say, why'd that jump? Okay, well, this is what occurred, this is why, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's difficult for me to figure out how we're supposed to do the spending when we don't really know what we've spent those on in those items.
So, are you saying that this worksheet, which is the, ties to the state budget forms, you're saying you like this detailed at the line item level of the general ledger?
So, right now, we don't have a chart of accounts that's been implemented. We talked about it last year, and each of the departments, um, pick their items. But it never, before we're on the left, it never got put in.
Right.
But, I mean, we're going to have to use this for now.
Absolutely.
But the questions you're asking me is very difficult to answer because I don't know why we went over the budget in contractual by fifty-three percent.
It could have been a, a miss, a miscode too, you know? I mean, I'm, I'm being honest with you, there's, there's a lot of, of miscodings, you know, where it got put in one contract service and it should have been in another.
Which column are you looking at?
What number, what are we looking, what are we looking at?
What column is she looking at saying that it's, uh, so far? Because I'm saying sixteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so.
Six thousand dollars.
So, what she's saying is if you go back to column H.
The nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, you have the nine thousand and the fifty-one hundred. And what this is showing is total contract services for twenty-two. What she's saying is by having the new chart of accounts, and let's just say there's ten line items that make up that one number. She's saying that, I think, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but, uh.
Well, and I'm going off of the budget status fund report that shows for twenty-two what was budgeted and then what we spent. So, we budgeted like fifty-eight hundred and we spent, well, this says eighty-nine, but.
This does not, so we're talking about three thousand dollars over to go because the number's so low, the next percent of time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, we, we overspent the total budget by eleven percent, twelve percent, but, you know. I'm just saying, we, we're going to have to use this for this year. It's just really difficult when, without having a chart of accounts and seeing where your expenditures might have jumped to be able to determine, do we need to fund that again? Was that a one-time item that particular year? It's just really difficult.
Yep. And it's hard, uh, hard to even do an audit or a, a budget if you don't have the numbers. I'm just being, I'm being, and I can't create the numbers because I'm the auditor.
Right.
That's the problem. So, I don't, I mean. What we done the last two?
Yeah, just based on what I see here, being we're at fifty percent halfway through the year. I don't like being at fifty percent halfway through the year. I prefer thirty, thirty-five percent halfway through the year.
Yeah.
For just in case that, so, I would almost say that we would, instead of the hundred three, you would almost have to go with that final for twenty-two.
The one oh one, two sixty-five?
Mm-hmm. And again, these are just to see if, you know, these numbers work correctly.
Okay, so.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna put these in, and then you're gonna come back and be like, okay, this is where this all puts.
That's right.
Right.
And cash carryover is going to play into that.
Right.
And the thing that, I don't, I don't want to drag this, like, it's been, first year was February before we finalized this worksheet. Last year was probably November. I would rather, now, you can do that, it's no problem, like, like commissioners. Let's say we pick one oh one, two sixty-five, we'll just use that as example. If you get in there and say, you know, we should be at one oh five, that's not a problem. Because internal workings of the budget can be changed before January first, is basically what I say, you know, before you put it into your new, your new for twenty-four, you put into new numbers and you start generating these reports. So, but I would rather it be finalized, you know, so, uh, at the budget here. You know, this is, this is the budget, this is what we're adopting.
Did we set that date?
No, we haven't.
And on the twenty-threes, is, is this pretty close to being current? This is the, this is where you guys do the.
The daily.
The dailies come from the treasurer, and you guys do your part, and it all gets posted.
Yes, what's the last name?
Well, I just printed this this morning, and I think his numbers go from, what'd you say, Friday?
Uh, whenever they sent the thing, Friday, I think it was.
I know we were caught up, I'm not sure how many more need to come up from the treasurer's office.
The treasurer's office is caught up to July seventh. They are not, they do not have, I mean, I came up Friday and did the cash counts and Michelle helped me, uh, to verify them. Uh, the lady that's in charge of. The lady that's in charge of, I'm not sure who it is here, but the lady that's in charge, uh, has had some health, or had some, um, loss in family. So it's the one that's in charge of doing the daily statements over in the treasurer's office, so she's behind now by, today's what, the seventeenth, so about ten days, I mean, working days will be less than ten, so eight days.
So this is fairly close, as we're looking at where we're at.
We should.
This is twenty-three.
It should be pretty close, yes.
A lot of them are at fifty or over.
Yeah. But Wanda, uh, Wanda's going to work with, what's the other agent's name? I, I went blank.
Is it Christine?
The one that's doing the bookkeeping that's, that's off on.
Christine, uh, Chris.
Chris, yeah, so she's off with funerals and different things.
She might be here today. I went up, I thought I saw her, but I know there've been some, a lot of it.
Yeah, there's, yeah, Christine felt bad, it wasn't caught up, but she goes, what can you do?
So in the personnel line item, your question to us, and Jay had said, just take what the rate is times three. But I believe in twenty, January twenty-four is that when it goes up, that last fifty cents?
I think that's correct. That will, we'll have to vote on it, of course.
Well, I think, I think when, um, someone did come in here and ask about it and it was voted that those, the one in July and January would occur. Who brought that? Who brought that to us? Maybe it was Melinda. So Melinda came in here a few weeks ago and asked about that. And I believe that it was approved for July and January. So if we take the base pay of everybody and add that, cause July's already been implemented, right?
So January of twenty-four?
There's been a, a fifty cents that's already been approved for January twenty-four. So if you take the current rate plus the fifty, that would be the baseline.
So what I do, Michelle, is Melinda has a sheet that shows all the rates, you know, everybody gets paid. And then what we do, it's in, I think it's in Excel. And then we go in and whatever this, this increase is, we adjust that to come to what each department would be stuck in your budget.
So if we, so if we add the fifty cents and then if, however, if we decide we're going to do a cost of living or whatever, that's what you're asking, that's for the personnel?
Yeah, we don't have to have that today. What I, I was trying to explain to Les that, you know, that's, that's how it's done. Twenty-four, now, if we know it's already there, then we go in and put that number in, cause that's, you're going to pay, I mean, that's, that's.
I guess that number could be, this is just an idea, that number could be put in as we're doing this, we can see what the final numbers are and then see if there's any room to add anything else. Because you need that number to determine our revenue neutral rate that we want to stay at, right? How that's playing.
Yes, anything we know to, but I must, and you, that's another conversation, I'm assuming you're staying for revenue neutral rate.
I want to.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, so there's two, three, okay, no, yeah. And I'm not worried about it yet because, um, if we would continue to spend, overspend, you know, then what happens is, because of inflation, Stephen inflation, I've showed this on the others, you know, if you have a ten percent inflation of the total expenditures, less personnel services and employee benefits, because you're already addressing those, it's like, um, just give you a rough, and I don't have, you know, the twenty-two numbers aren't.
Well, I've got some twenty-two.
So let's just say that the net expenditure was fifteen and fifteen million for the total county. And personnel services are typically around fifty-five percent for a county. So if we cut that in half and let's just round it off, cut it in half at seven point five, then if you have a ten percent increase in inflation, and again, I'm rounding, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at your current.
It's thirty thousand.
Yeah, it's a hundred ninety, a hundred ninety-four thousand right now, it's a hundred ninety-four thousand, oh two three is where your one mill is at. So, yeah, I just, do I have sort of.
Well, so I show our budget for twenty-two was set at fourteen, three six, three eight, sixty.
Yeah.
But when the final numbers come in, it's at fifteen-two, so we were over by about nine hundred thousand. And that's the whole budget between general and everything.
Yeah, and I, and I, those numbers, we gotta, there's some of them.
Well, I think as, so mine was printed by Melinda in May, May thirtieth, and at that time, year-to-date was fourteen-eight, but then your numbers from getting updated stuff is fifteen-two, so there was some of those encumbrances probably came in or whatever, but.
It's close.
So, but we, yeah.
But that's a, that's a big number.
But that's where.
When you do that cost of living, this is the issue that when everybody comes in throughout, you're asking for raises and changes, then when you do it here, now you can't. That's why if you're going to do that, you have to almost say, this is the one going for raises, don't come asking any time before that. You won't handle the raises this certain day, and that's how that all came down. Otherwise, you start this thing all over the place.
Oh, yeah, it's hard, it's hard, it's a moving, it's a moving target and it's hard to hit the target. I mean, when you're doing a budget. Okay, uh, you just, I mean, I, I'm here to listen to or answer questions, but if you want to just go down through each of these departments and you look at what they proposed and look at what they spent in twenty-two and the average, and you tell me, and it's not going to be perfect, budgeting is not a perfect science. I mean, it's, I don't have a crystal ball, you don't either, so.
All right, so you want to just go with what your thought was?
That's a, yeah, that's a.
Starting, that's a starting.
Putting that out there for you guys.
So we got through each of these and then we did the personnel for like ending.
Yeah.
We're going to go back and tell it exactly.
I can go, I, once I get that worksheet from Melinda, she always keeps it up to date. I can, I can tell you real, probably within a day, you know, what that number is for each of the departments. Because she's got it broke out either hourly or salary by department, I just go in and, it's an Excel spreadsheet, we just go in and.
And for twenty-three numbers, we've actually spent quite a bit less than last year, this, I mean, we're quite a bit under on the contractual commodities for this year.
Yeah.
We just overspent in twenty-two, I just don't know what we spent.
We'll find it.
So Les, you're wanting to do the nine thousand in contractual and the fifty-one in commodities? Or you want to do the twenty-two numbers?
I didn't put that there. I just pulled the main number, the total number. I mean, we're only at sixteen eighty-two in contractual, so we're considering, both of those were considerably under.
Yeah, we're at twenty-eight.
But we're still over fifty percent of what we budgeted roughly.
Just, just.
Yeah.
Do you guys want a twenty-three sheet, cause it's got all this on there that you're calculating?
Okay, yeah.
Is it twenty-three? Well, do you want to have her pull stuff up and then she can look at stuff as we go?
Yeah.
What would you like?
Bring the sheets out, that'd be fun.
Can you see, I mean, I can either copy these or.
Really, this twenty-four line, this is what the department heads brought forth and proposed.
Column E and yeah, that's, that's what they proposed.
So really, I mean, most of that lines up, there's just a few.
Yeah.
Like the treasurer's department, that one jumped a considerable amount.
But that's one we talked about, it's how you can put it in, uh, let me get back to it for a second.
The, I did correct, you mean the.
Right, this has.
Yeah, there's the reimbursement expenses.
It's the total of the days before.
So that one is probably a lot closer to the off, maybe it's back to last one is closer to.
Which, I mean, I'm just looking in the past. Cut that one quite a bit.
Is this the side number you're looking at?
So the reason she probably, you can look at line items like within, you know, the, uh, department, and it tells you at the bottom of each department the percentage, so you don't have to go back and recalculate, I think that's what she's. So just testing what, what's a commissioner's percentage of.
Forty-nine point four seven.
Yeah, forty-nine point four seven.
Okay, so since we're so low right now in the contractual commodities, we're going to just stay with the six and the seven?
Okay, Jay.
The line items.
I'm going to have to make me a copy so I.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you, I think this includes July's bills and July's, July seventeenth, so I think that's got July in it. So it's probably through seven months. It wouldn't be through August, or maybe we'll have the table of August, but I think that's through seven months.
That's, well, this one is pretty. It doesn't necessarily mean that.
I mean, I was assuming that you're turning it on seventeen, that's everything.
Well, but that's the thing, like, this, this report, all this information can be entered two, three, four weeks ago. But it may not be.
Exactly.
Right. So I mean, yeah, we're looking at forty-nine point four percent, but we might actually be at fifty-two, depending on how up to date that line is. That's why I like looking at. Right.
We're down five dollars, so we're pretty good. Michelle, do you know if this has everything in it through the seventeenth?
That's why I like this spreadsheet, cause I like the comparison to previous year that we spent.
See, once we get the CIC budget side figured out, this right here is actually in your system that it's set up. It generates all this based outright out of your system.
Yeah.
Now, twenty-two, once we get that correct, we'll, you know, finalize then. Prior years, they should have been corrected, but I can't, you know, guarantee because what you got is what's called reclass entries, so if there's something that's in the wrong line item, like you're talking right now, it's in contract services and it should have been in commodities, that, that budgetary system in CIC is not going to be accurate because we don't go back and correct every line item.
Well, and I, from last year and from talking to some other people that, where all the departments use the, um, CIC, a lot of times the department says they're getting their bills, they'll code them where they want them applied, and then that gets sent to the clerk and then that gets applied, but then they can always be, each department that has access to that, they can look as things get applied on a monthly basis and make sure that things were applied in the categories they want. And then if there happens to be an error where something got put, those can be caught and corrected.
Yeah, the department, that's awesome, I, I think the department head should be the one, you know, making sure those are right.
So as I've been talking about CIC and training and all that, that's where I'd like to see us go. And I think that would help the department heads and whoever commissioners are.
Yeah.
Also during budget time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we're in agreeance on the commissioners' funds?
Okay, so six and seven? Six thousand, seven thousand?
Okay, so for right now.
You have the one hundred three, you just want to stick at that? Okay.
Stay at the one hundred three?
Yeah, remember to start each one.
Well, the payroll might have to be different though with the, um, I don't think that.
You'll get that number for us though, and then before we do that, I'm like that.
Again, this is giving him a starting point, I mean.
Absolutely, so leaving the six and seven, change one more time. Yeah, absolutely, at least, yeah.
But we have to do this today because we have to declare by Thursday whether we're having a parent or not, is that correct?
Yeah, but I don't, I didn't, I'm, I was just assuming you're staying at revenue neutral.
But on the number statement, we can stay revenue neutral.
I don't know if I'm going to know that because these numbers, if we see and, and like you go down through all columns and it looks like exactly about where they've been last year, you're at fifty percent roughly, then there's a good chance that you're going to be good. I don't know the undercover cash, so the cash carryover, so let's just say you did spend nine hundred thousand more last year than what we had anticipated, then your cash balances would be dropping. Now, I'm not worried this, this year because you have other monies, you know, capital and all that, but at some point, I mean, if the, if, if the expenditures go like this, the mill levy's locked, or dollars are locked. You're going to have that mill levy, the dollars locked, the mill levy is, that's where it's going to be interesting.
Well, and you can always set it at revenue neutral at the hearing, but, or after the hearing, you don't have to exceed revenue, but if you don't cover on a timely basis, you're locked in that. So even though it may be all for not, it's a side of the revenue neutral.
Well, what, what a lot do you, and I, I don't think there's an appetite to do that here, but what a lot do is set it above revenue neutral because the assessed value could change and with the court changeover, these assessed values that we got, you know, there's, there's one that started the year, another one that was here for two months, wasn't she, Julie?
Well.
And now here, and so what happens is when that estimated assessed value comes in at June fifteenth, the amount would come out of the computer and we can come to October first and certify it. If you're locked at revenue neutral and that changes one way or the other, then it's based on that assessed value. That's the kicker with the, when you're set above it and the state even recommends that, you set it above it, but that means you have to have the revenue neutral hearing and all that, then the flexibility, it goes, it goes up and down.
That's always why I recommend the vote to exceed, it's because I feel like.
And then you, at the hearing, you don't stay, you stay at the, yeah, you stay.
Doesn't mean you're going to exceed it, it just means that you have that flexibility just in case.
I mean, the revenue neutral is a pretty new thing anyway.
That's why.
It's pretty new anyway.
It's a mess.
Yeah.
I'm tired. I told, I told Michelle, this is why I'm not, I don't like it, is because by July twentieth, they are, everybody's expecting me to have the budget in, even though they don't have to have the budget in.
Right.
It's, it's, it's one month compared to three months, is what you said. So back to, yeah, back to the numbers here, sorry.
Okay, so the clerk, you're just wanting to keep those numbers?
Yeah, this is what they proposed, and so I don't disagree with that one.
So, so just put in the proposed numbers from the department head unless.
Well, that one's three thousand, eight thousand on clerk.
Yeah.
So treasurer.
Treasurer wants to add some items because it's stuff that happened this year with the commodities and contractual, so that'll go that number up a little bit.
Which.
But this is the one that also, we just talked about at the end with the, for the vehicle funding, ninety-six, kind of had, this is why we changed that first on the pass, based on what the numbers were that we were receiving. County got high to open that as too, so. This year it was, uh, a last check up, it was seventy-eight thousand.
So we want to plug this three hundred in for this year? Is that what we're?
Uh, well, last year we were two forty, and that's probably a lot closer number, three hundred is not closer. I remember giving you the money spent.
Well, last year, last year you're at two ninety, two ninety-seven.
Right, not the reimbursement. So with the reimbursement, you're down closer to two hundred.
For budget purposes here though, on this, I would rather see it at gross and then, because we do not have that budget. The treasurer, the treasurer, what happens is, I mean, we talked about slip four, but those budget credits start at the treasurer's office. So when they code those, when they come in, so whether it's sheriff, you know, the own treasurer, they have to code it as a budget credit so that when it comes over to, uh, the clerk's office, it gets either deducted or shown against the.
So this is what we talked about the other day, until somebody has over that amount, whatever their budget amount is, that's when they have their money in their, in their pocket.
Right, yeah, until they spend their budget, if it's three hundred thousand, until they spend their budget, it's not a problem, I mean.
No, what I'm saying is what we talked about was, if it's set this way, and you've got a fund that comes in and pays that, then that, whatever they want.
Yes.
But that's not true because they have to exceed the three. But that's not true because they have to exceed the three hundred thousand before they have that money, is that correct or not?
Yeah, and, but the thing you gotta think about, we're in the general fund, most, all of these, the sheriff, the treasurer, all these, if they overspend their budget, it's not budget violation. So that's where, back to what Heather said last year, she wants to look at each line item, you know, that's, I mean, which is, is great.
And I agree, but if you're gonna look at each line item, then you have to look at reimbursements too, because that's a lot. So I mean, if you're gonna do one, you gotta do it all, you can't pick and choose which line item you wanna look at. In other words, it doesn't work whether, I mean, not the way I'm gonna pick. I look at this, if I have a three hundred thousand dollar budget, and that means I can spend three hundred thousand dollars any way I want because I'm like an official, is that correct?
That's right.
Well, but you can't spend it and take it out either.
What it does is if you have a three hundred thousand dollar budget, and what a budget credit does is it, let's just say it's seventy-five, or let's just say it's a hundred, it, the reimbursement's a hundred. So what that ends up doing is if you use the hundred thousand budget credit against the three hundred thousand dollar budget, it gives them spending authority for the other hundred thousand. So in a sense, they have a four hundred thousand. And that's where it gets interesting with elected officials, I don't mean that bad, I just mean.
That's why.
That's why I've always shown gross and budget, because I, if you, the school districts many times, they'll actually send that budget credit to the line item. So if we did that, that way in this case right here, the two sixty that you show there as personnel services, if we send a hundred thousand dollars in as a budget credit, what that does on CIC is it reduces that expenditure line item by a hundred thousand dollars. But the budget in there is two sixty, so they have the authority. And if they weren't doing, what, you weren't watching, let's say you weren't watching line item, their total budget of three hundred thousand has now become four hundred thousand. And that's why I've never, I've never done the net approach. And that's just my, my philosophy because I tell the department heads, I've told them here, the sheriff clerk back in the nineties, if you, until you bring in three hundred thousand dollars, that revenue over here is covering your budget. So let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so that, that, what you're saying is what I'm saying with this one, the way I'm saying that, I'm protecting with that hundred thousand, that's what they think.
That's right, absolutely, yeah. And that's why I've always done it that way, I show gross on all counties, I show gross over here and leave their budget the way it is, and until they come up with three hundred thousand dollars, they have no more budget authority. Even though technically we could, we could, we could offset.
So for the treasurer, then?
You just want to stay with the twenty and twenty, last year it was thirty, thirty and ten, but I think.
Well, I shared the numbers, just two forty was the budget, this year it's from three hundred. But I don't.
Now, if you look at the history here, I mean, if you look at the history here, I don't know what the three forty-four was in the very first year that I showed history, but it's three forty-four, two sixty-one, two fifty-three, uh, and two ninety, and the average is two eighty-seven, and we're setting at three hundred. So that's, three hundred is not far off, but it's up to you, or you wanna.
Well, the contractual commodities, I see the, so I have a question on the personnel services video about that number. So once I see that number, I can tell you that three hundred is correct on.
What I could do, what I could do is I could add one more column here. When I get the sheet from Melinda and make those calculations, I could put what, what they leave there. So their budget's intact here, I can leave it in there, and then right to the right of that personnel services line, I could tell you what that twenty, what it was, January of twenty-four's increase is, so you can see.
Well, the budget for twenty-two in personnel was one eighty-two, and then the proposed budget for twenty-four is two sixty. Hold on, I'm reading wrong. Now, the budget proposal for twenty-three was two hundred thousand, and here it's proposed at two sixty. I guess it's right there.
Yeah.
So do you want to go with the, on the commodity and contractual, do we want to go with the twenty and twenty?
That's what they requested, the one that concerns me is the personnel expenses, because I look at the numbers on the sheet and then over here that here, so I'm not, that makes me wonder where that number comes from. Before it was two hundred, the actual year-to-date is one fourteen.
Yeah.
So I don't, the two sixty on that up. Unless I'm missing something, that's why I say.
You're not, I don't think you're missing anything, I think personally what that is, is probably, this was done prior to, can I just be point blank here, this is done prior to the treasurer leaving. What was built in there was some of the things that she was asking for, that's just the way I, I look at it, based on conversations with her.
So.
Right.
On the personnel, I thought we had kind of decided, you're just gonna put in everybody's rate now plus the fifty cents that we know for sure in January.
In January, right.
Plug those in, and we'll just see where, when everything is filled in, how that fits, and then if we see the total number and if we, then at that point, if we're wanting to add a cost of living or anything else, we can go back. Is that, are you guys okay with that on the personnel?
I'm fine with that.
I can just, instead of putting an air column in there, I, I can just go in after that worksheet and I'll just, I'll just, because you'll have the proposal right next to it.
Absolutely.
I'll just drop in what, what that personnel services is based on the January twenty-four, and, and then you guys go from there, you just say, do we want to get a cost of more than that?
So that's what we'll do on all the personnel line items.
That's, absolutely, yeah.
So what would you two like to do with the contractual and the commodities?
While you're discussing, I might hit the restroom, I drank too much coffee.
I mean, they requested twenty and twenty, I probably, it looks like those are probably the tougher numbers. This year they got one that's a little higher than that, but it'll probably.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with going with what they requested.
I think that's probably for plus numbers.
Right.
If anything, I might be a little light.
Well, considering they haven't spent twenty thousand, or less than twenty thousand, so.
Yeah, the average is twenty-five thousand.
Right. So if they're cutting their own.
Any one, so.
So then, the total, this three hundred thousand?
He'll change that.
I think we don't have the totals till the personnel.
We're just, the personnel, we'll change all of these numbers. And probably give us a more realistic number.
From him, I think he's just mainly asking the contractual commodities, and then he's gonna throw in that personnel line, and then that'll give us the total at the end, and then we can work backwards, I guess.
Okay.
Excellent.
County attorney.
With the county attorney, theirs had all the upgrades coming in this year. So when she asked for her new numbers, they dropped back to what they used to be, if you look at the numbers, go to the average, go right back to that, so I'm probably.
Okay. Register deeds.
She always spends way more than she should.
I wish I'd got that on camera.
Yeah, yeah, hers is only five and six thousand, so.
Right.
Is the capital outlay, should that be her tech fund? Should that be her tech fund?
What is your capital outlay for? Yeah, you have a thousand under capital outlay.
I think that's an error.
Well, that's why I'm asking if it's an error, then yeah, we can strike it. It's not a big deal, I was just curious, I figured if you're here, I ask you. So that thousand we need to remove? And then the other numbers, the five and the six are good?
Okay, so you decided the twenty and twenty stays in the treasurer, is that what you decided?
Yeah.
Okay, county attorney, what do you decide there, stay same? Okay, now you're talking about the.
Everything's the same, except for the one thousand and the deeds we've struck in.
I'm not sure what that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
And now we're at HR.
Now, did I read the general, are we done at ten here? Are we done at ten here?
Which, we have another, but there's been a change to that, so what we may do is just pause that ten for a brief discussion, and then we'll come right back into this.
Because the treasurer was asking, he's on eleven, so he was, he was asking if he's here, comes in eleven. Does treasurer?
Oh.
So I'll be just trying to figure out.
I think we're rolling now, so.
Okay.
HR.
I don't have those numbers.
Yeah, there's no history there.
No change.
No change?
Well, county sheriff.
I have them, in the past, they've asked to have overtime broke out between personnel services, I just thought of this. Are we still wanting to, I have a line item there, but there's nothing in there because we haven't broke it out. Do I need to go in and break that out?
I mean, I usually do. Just based on the nature of what we do, it's kind of, but it's hard to know.
I don't know what the system, I can't.
CIC.
What are you saying now?
On the overtime in the past, it's not broke out here on all of them, shit has been history, that's one of the ones that has the most.
And he gets some of that back through the KDA, I don't know how you would show that on what's active overtime, what's not, that's what I, because they do this.
Let's, let's take the stab at it this way first and get the numbers in here, and then I'll work with Melinda. We'll get the personnel services with the January, and then we can break out if we need to, is that okay?
In general, the last three years, in twenty, in twenty twenty, for everybody, overtime was about two hundred and forty-one thousand. In twenty-one, it was two forty-one thousand, and in twenty-two, it was two hundred and two thousand. So however you want to figure out how to plan for that and what we're doing with that, and like Jay said, there's a certain amount of that that is reimbursed, we just don't ever see it on paper, and it'd be really nice to, I don't know if there's a way to have like a monthly report when the departments give their department head, they can show any revenues, reimbursements.
Well, yeah, they can print all this stuff out, I mean, it's just gonna matter whether this is up to date or not. They print the same things that we're prescribed.
And it goes back in general times, I don't believe we're even, we don't have the reimbursement setup yet, unless you don't. The question is, are numbers and numbers going back and sending that increases the contractual services some? Which, we just got away, well, I don't know, I don't know what that would be.
I mean, it looks like they're pretty.
Like I say, year-to-date, they're below fifty percent.
Right. But if you look at the mid number that's requested in two thousand twenty-four, like you said, it's probably like more than two thousand twenty-three, so is there something that would?
Well, the other thing he's done here, I mean, he showed it on his sheet, you have to realize there's two hundred and fifteen thousand of reimbursement there. So the grocery, the gross budget is more like two eight, two eight and a half.
So we're changing any of them?
Do you want to leave the reimbursements in there for this discussion or not?
But yeah.
Okay.
Are you guys good with the numbers? Heather?
Lucy's here.
I mean, you can plug them in, it's just so hard to be, take three line items and make sixteen million dollars worth of decisions and not having detail, it's just really. It's difficult.
Well, we have to get through it one way or another. Jail. They're at.
I think that's one of the numbers on the jail.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there.
So the, this is from five thirty.
Twenty-two didn't get.
I can give you those if you want to.
Okay. All right, I'm here adjusting.
For twenty twenty-two, jail personnel was six four three, zero one seven nine two. But it's not worked down with overtime or any of that, so contractual services.
Now, okay.
And we're on jail, right, contractual services?
Yeah.
Was one three one, one two eight point nine four.
Okay, um, let me get those from you a little bit here.
Well, the total is eight nine five, three nine eight, point two five.
Okay. Say it one more time, please.
I have eight nine five, and this is for twenty twenty-two, eight nine five, three nine eight, twenty-five.
So they proposed this lower than actual.
Yes, well, and it was over twenty percent.
That's the same numbers that I took us for twenty-two.
Didn't change it, yeah.
So, let's take the deeds.
So you're wanting to keep the one seventeen and eighty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because that's way off from what we.
That's probably what you're asking some questions.
Mental health.
That's just.
Staying the same?
Yep. Senior center.
This is the one that, between the senior center and the transportation that is still being figured out.
Did we ever get any information back on funding for that from the state, because I know it was a change.
I've got, I've got a problem with every county. I'm trying to meet with Reno County because they have a very elaborate system of how they do that with what's called RCAT. And I know the lady, I just haven't had a chance, that our, our schedules haven't worked, that I want to set up because it's very confusing, here, Pratt, Jackson. Set up, hopefully in the next week, now that the twentieth will be over, I can, but we have to come up with a better way to report that because it's very com, it's, it just gets so complicated from what the state reimburses, you know, that number, and each one, you've got the most, you've got the most part-time bus drivers anybody, so, and I think maybe some of that might reduce some, but it sounds like, but.
Well, we know that the grant.
Right.
Is about half of our.
Absolutely.
Right, and that's why I'm saying while we're looking at this, if we already know that they're not gonna have, because they're gonna have.
Now, this is the senior, this is the senior citizen side, so transportation where it gets complicated, because it is half, it's about half of what it was under COVID.
So are we good with these numbers for then?
For the senior center.
Yeah, I'll tell them, see.
Yep. Okay, it is ten AM. Yes, ma'am, we will take a brief recess and then we'll move on to business, and we'll get right back. Is that okay, Scott? Is that okay, Scott? You gentlemen would like to come up to the front?
I tell my governor it feels like a woodshed.
You, you're kind of dragging a little bit.
Long way.
Like that whip stuff, if you don't stick out. At least you got a smile, I hope.
I can smile through anything, it seems like.
We'll wait for Michelle to get back and then we'll get rolling. Said a brief recess, dude.
No idea.
I'm sure Josh was heading back, have you got him on there?
So did you leave?
No, he's recessing somewhere.
Yeah, it's time when we walk back now, or is it outside or inside?
Okay. You gentlemen, would like to lead off?
Okay. So we prepared a resolution and road agreement as you requested. We spent the week with our calculators, uh, throughout different ideas. And we have an alternative offer that we would like to start with. And it was spurred by something Commissioner Bailey said. At some point during last week, you said, why don't you guys take the road? So that kind of clicked with us in real time and we spent the week talking to management and trying to figure out how that would look. And we think it looks a little something like this. So here would be.
The actual permit, I'm sorry.
We're trying to help out.
And here's what the C P would look like. Now, obviously, it's maintenance of haul out is where the key language is.
Do you have another copy for the clerk?
Yeah, we do.
I can, um.
She just likes, she attaches these for meeting minutes?
Yeah, I can, I can, she's got, I was going to say I can, you know.
We did make another concession and that was on the paragraph that says road fee. Commissioner Bailey and I, remember our discussions differently, but I'm going to have, we took his, we took his belief in the now splitting the road fee equally on both of our offers.
But this, did the other operator want to appeal?
Oh, sorry. We're, on, on the, on the, where we take over the maintenance of the haul out, correct, we would split the, we would, uh, split the road fee, I got so many of these in my head right now.
I'm very confused, you had, you were saying they're taking over maintenance of the road. And then we'll split the money, any money that comes from data.
Right, because even though we're taking over the maintenance of the road, you might still have expenses like the ditches. Or if there's flooding of some sort, we wouldn't be equipped to handle flooding situation. So we're not saying that we're going to eliminate all of our expenses because we probably wouldn't, that would be a year where you probably wouldn't have it. But the ditches would still be kept, there'd be mowing, there'd be this or be that. And a split of it would, we would feel more than compensate the expenses that you might have.
And this is on paragraph four, road fee?
Correct.
Um, this says that we rebate you the entire twenty five percent or twenty five cents and then we keep the excess.
I don't know which, you, you might be looking at.
I don't know what. What page are you on?
Page one of the road agreement, paragraph four.
Yeah, mine has been attached on a previous, I have three point L.
It should say.
Yeah.
We have the same document.
I think it might have been updated. She was passing the night.
I know this is a departure from where we've been, so we obviously don't expect an answer today. If you need another week to talk about it, that's perfectly fine with us, we, we filed this to be a little early to make sure that we had time to discuss things like this.
And we'd be willing to, you know, work with Brian and if he, you know, if there's an issue down there, we'll meet him down there. If the road needs to be bladed, we'll go down there and send a blade, we'll get it done. I mean, the intent of this is to keep the road in the condition it is now. Yeah, the first. First one. The second one is back.
Josh, I haven't handed out the, the traditional one yet.
No, that's not, the one I think you sent me, much my computer's going weird tricks. And can you? Yeah, can you go over the indemnification? Which?
Sure, so on the traditional one.
It's on paragraph twelve.
On the, on the traditional one, we indemnify you. But you've got special protections that we don't have, you have your tort claims immunity act. We want to preserve that ability so that when, if we're going to take care of the road, we switch the indemnity. And that way we don't lose tort claims immunity. We, no matter what happens, we both get sued, right? If, if something happens, we both get sued. So, uh, this way we're flipping indemnity and that way the tort claims immunity act is not lost as a defense for both of us.
And you could know this better than I do, but my understanding of indemnification is just this contract that you agreed to reimburse. So the county will still be the party and you would basically be like our insurer. And so we won't, wouldn't lose that even if you're indemnifying us.
I don't know, is it traditional, your, yes, yeah, I agree with that.
So there, there's basically no reason to switch it for that reason now if there's, because if, if you're taking it under, you're saying that you're no longer a contractor of the.
We step into your shoes.
But if we're indemnifying you and you're a party, you don't have those special tort claims. That won't cause you to have quasi judicial immunities or quasi governmental immunity.
I don't lose those though, if, if you, I, see, and even when I was a county councilor, I never had an agreement like this. So this is somewhat unexplored territory for me as well. Now, we, we contracted things out, you know, you contract out the mowing at Parks and Rec and stuff like that, we give it in the contractor and maybe this is like that.
Yeah, I think we probably need to head in that direction because it's still going to be a county road.
Right.
You're going to be our agent or our contractor for purposes of maintaining that.
Agreed.
And so maybe it's as simple as on behalf of the county or something like that.
Maybe that's just something you and I tweet or get portion of the.
But the, the spirit of it would be. It's a county road, the county is maintaining it because. Unless it's a private road that there's.
Yeah, we'll both get sued. But the good news is.
So you technically don't get an indemnification either way.
I would be fine with maybe, I would be fine with getting rid of it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's not either or, you don't have to shift anything else there. So, yeah, we can.
The good news is we do have some small experience in roads.
Well, so do we.
Right, both of us do, we know a road and we see one.
Discussion today regarding if this is starter, non-starter, or anything you want to explore, if we want to go back to at least as is. As we left the tweets last week on what you're calling the traditional, that is something that you, you are not agreeable to and, and if we approved it would be.
So by our, our calculations, the way we left it last week, the, and I can pass it out now if you would like. The mathematics of it simply doesn't add up for us. It's over, it's over at least a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, every year. Just, just, uh, in costs and that doesn't include, you know, I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can.
In, inflation over the next twenty years of dust control. I think I handed all, I think I handed you all of my copies.
Oh, I thought maybe you had the cost on there, that's what I was looking for. No, um, this is, this is, the, where we left last week was going back to the boss, so to speak, on two dust control uh, application by the county reimbursed by mid-states and then we have the.
Road fee.
Road fee at twenty five cents, we're trying to figure out if we're splitting the entire amount, splitting the excess. If we were reimbursing the entire twenty five cent, twenty five cents and then keeping the extra some ditches.
And then a thousand tons.
Thousand tons of what?
Ro, uh, ask of rock. For the last five years, we've donated five hundred tons.
Oh, okay.
Well, they, they were giving five hundred tons for half mile, they were giving five hundred tons for two miles and then the ask is a thousand tons for two miles.
So that's.
But where the sticking point, as I understand it, where it starts where these costs are getting too high for, for at least where you guys are at is the second best control.
Yeah.
And the, uh.
Each, each dust control is twenty five grand, so there's fifty.
And why would we, why would we keep the K or K dot money if you already paid us initially?
Right, I mean, if we, if, if the, if the rock's free, if the dust control's free and you're getting a roof fee, I don't know what the road fee's for anymore. Because you're, but we, we get to a hundred and twenty like this, it's twenty five grand per dust control, so that's fifty thousand dollars. The road fee is, if we sell two hundred thousand tons of rock, then that would be fifty thousand dollars, so that gets you to a hundred. And then at seventeen dollars a ton, a thousand tons is seventeen thousand, so you get to a hundred and seventeen thousand, quick, fast and in a hurry. And, you know, I, I looked at what we pay for the rest of our quarries, twenty some, twenty three, twenty four quarries. The local government fees of all of those combined do not add up to a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, they don't. So, plus we have competing quarries in this county that will not be paying any of this until their C U P comes up and I don't know when their C U P's come up, it could be years.
It's up right now, it's up right now, that's why we were talking all over, we're talking together.
I think harshly C P is for new land, it's not for his existing.
It's off the scent board.
Yeah. But I don't know, I don't know how much life he has.
I mean, if we're talking apples to apples, we're talking two and a half miles, we're talking a tenth of a mile, right? So basically, we're talking about probably a one point five million dollar bridge versus a zero dollar bridge because there's. Which I'm looking at the. Because there's a, which I'm looking at the, the proposal that he sent me, there's nothing in there. It looks to me like it's a road surface agreement, not a road agreement, because there's nothing in there about the bridges, ditches, flooding, like you've already said, so I don't know how, because that bridge, I mean, we just went through this with a bridge on a waterway with an existing port that was there. That was four hundred and some thousand dollars just to open it. So that's a cost that has to be, the taxpayers paid that because there was no road bringing it from the other. And that's one of the things we talked about with hands, when they kind of talked to us about doing, hey, this is, this is reality. This is what it costs to do this, this, here's what it costs.
We're not the only people who use the bridge. And what other, what other industry do you make, build bridges? Any of, any of them.
Not making building bridges, well, I actually had another one in New York. That avenue there, we can talk about this later on, but am I not even have to do that? Yours isn't the majority of the way because it's a cross out. And would you, would you make the statement that yours isn't?
I don't know the truth.
Okay.
I certainly wouldn't deny it without sitting down with the calculator. How was the bridge? How was the bridge?
I'd have to go back and double check that.
Because we've only been there for twenty years, it's a fifteen.
I looked that up last time and I can't remember exactly what it was. I had that dated on the record.
But, but part of the problem is the rock is where the rock is. You've heard me say that before, we can't pick up the rock and move it to Highway seventy-five. And if your ongoing standard from now on is that quarry is going to be responsible for all the bridges, you're going to run out of quarries pretty quick. Pretty quick, these things are measured in decades, I know that.
I don't say.
I mean, so the golden fact, I'm just really quick, the golden factor is basically what is the, what is the wear and tear on public infrastructure? And we're trying to come up with a fair amount that would address that.
And we're not saying, well, I can pay nothing. I mean, we've agreed that fair amount, I mean.
So it's not paying for the bridge, not paying for the road, paying for your use.
Yeah.
The backs of your use, which is the majority of that, we're just trying to come up with the easiest out formula to, to encapsulate what is fair.
Your, I would make a motion that we put this off for a week and give us time to look at it and go to our engineers and get that stop talk to Ryan and get some information. That's why I'm at, I think at this time.
So is then a motion to table it?
Oh, yeah, motion to table.
Okay, the motion to table until July twenty-fourth has been made, one point of discussion. Do you have any questions that you need to have asked of them, Heather, Jay, Josh, at this point? Or do you want further discussion outside? Do you want to just meet with them, get your questions answered?
Well, I, I feel like I understand the, how those, I understand kind of where we're at in getting to what the nature of this discussion is. And that's why that was my last comment is we, no one's trying to pull anything on the other, we're just trying to come up with what their prices and, you know, address the effect on the local community, which has to do with operation, I think we've already kind of got, gotten there, so to speak.
I had a question on that, I know we had asked and the citizens have brought it up that in the definition of operating, it didn't include loading. So who loads your trucks?
Our loader operator.
He only.
But if loading's not in your definition, then when they're, when the trucks are coming in before operating hours and you're saying you're able to operate, loading isn't part of the definition. So when those trucks are coming in and getting loaded and then waiting until seven to leave, who's loading them?
We are.
So then it's part of operating or it's not?
I would say it's not. The definition of operating was set in the two thousand and three CUP by, and I wasn't there, you weren't there. So we don't know where the definition came from, but it was agreed upon by both parties in two thousand and three.
Which is hauling is where that starts and now obviously that could be litigated.
Well, it was just, I got to thinking about it later and they, they specifically don't want the word loading in the definition of operation. And so I was like, well, that's odd. So if the trucks are being loaded prior to seven o'clock for them to be in compliance, it would mean that their company's not loading them, it must be somebody else loading it, otherwise they're not in compliance.
No, because loading is excluded. I mean, you can go and do your tax report to midnight because that's not compliant software in the middle of the quarter, but.
So if you wanted to change it, you'd have to.
Yeah.
You'd have to add loading, right.
But for them to load up currently, if, if the definition of haul in that point oh three, you know, legislative intent, so to speak, did not include loading, then they would be in compliance even though.
Correct.
If it did or was ambiguous, then it could be litigated, but that, there's no reason to, to do that because you have the power now to just put in exactly what you mean.
Correct, so for me, to me, it seems like it's a technicality to allow them to work outside their hours legally because if they're saying loading is not part of their operating, then someone else must be loading their trucks.
You know, I don't, I don't follow that. They're, they're loading their trucks, loading is not part of the operation, they are not operating, but they are loading.
They're currently within the guideline set of the CUP.
Just like they could go in and they could operate course without being kept operating.
Right.
But if you, if you want to add loading, that's a good.
So.
So the, the questions, I think I understand, I'll, I'll do some research on the indemnification. I understand the reason for the shift, but we probably have to tweak the language just to say, we're gonna, we're gonna be in the party regardless, even though you're getting sued. But we would have to indemnify you as an operator because you're doing it on our behalf and the public. Everything you do to that road will be adding a public benefit for everyone who uses it. And so they'll have to be constituted as an agent, a congressional, county, county piece of agreement. I'm glad you brought up operating because that was just kind of left last week. You guys just instructed me as a board what a definition of operator should be and then.
I'm not interested in changing their definition.
And then third is, it sounds like we just need to go, get the calculator out as far as road use, traffic study, you can determine if you rather want to drill down how many trucks versus cars versus buggings coming over that bridge or road, but.
I, I would like to reach out to Ryan.
So your motion to table until July twenty-fourth, would you want to include for further review?
I think so, yeah, because I don't know on the form of whatever I've written.
So we, let's.
I mean, this is a total.
The third verse, is there?
That's what I was getting ready to say, if you'd like to amend the date, we could table it until the thirty-first for further review.
And I'm going with thirty-first.
You're going on the thirty-first? August seventh it is. That should give everybody plenty of time to come to something, correct?
So if we have questions, do you want us to contact you, do you want us to, whatever you're most comfortable with. I'd be glad to take all of your phones.
I would just advise at this point that we have contact, you know, not that we don't want to talk to you, but just to keep simple, two points of contact, we can coordinate that with you, is that, are you fine with that?
Yeah.
And then that way, we're kind of streamlining this instead of.
When I was county councilor, I was annoyed at the number of people that would bypass my office on legal and go right to the county commissioners. Legal, perfectly fine.
Right.
But it did leave me in the dark a time or two.
And my ego's not that big.
A question.
Pardon?
Question I might have and hasn't brought up for this. If we're talking to our road engineers and I've been in Ryan, all them, we've been, and we want to get a road study, would you guys be interested in participating in that?
What, what would a road study be closed at?
Uh, I would imagine maybe one of the traffic on the road, the traffic was, however they do that. I don't know exactly how to do those things, but I know we put them out several different places to, to have the traffic and know the traffic counts and all that.
Um, I mean, can, we'd like to see the scope of work.
So if you'd like to restate your motion.
I'll restate my motion to say that I would like to put their, delay this or. Table it over, however you want to, I don't know what that word.
Table.
Table, I'm going to tell the August seventh, two thousand twenty-third commissioner at ten a.m.
You say August seventh?
August seventh, correct, at ten a.m.
Do we want to.
We also have, what's that, sorry?
We want to address the road study now, I mean, we'll have like two, two months starting August seventh before this expires. Do we, do you want to authorize up to a certain amount?
Uh, I think I'll talk to those guys first and then, because they want to vote the scope out and I kind of want to vote the scope out too. I've heard the theory, but I don't know the exact scope, so I don't know exactly.
The only thing I have to worry about is all the construction muster is full gear right now, I don't know. If you order one a day, when they can do it, that would be, you know, that I would worry about.
Well, we can interrupt it next week, have a commission.
We can even, yeah. If, if you need me here next week, call me. I'll come.
Okay, so, motion to table until August seventh at ten a.m. has been made. I would second that motion, all in favor. I oppose, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, we can go back and finish with you.
Is it with the senior center?
Apologies for the slight interruption.
That is, yeah, the senior center, we accepted their proposed numbers, there's no change.
I'm sorry, I probably don't have to head out, I'm staying for that, I'm assigning these to me.
I don't see, we just have the, but the, your exact section is not elected, so, yeah. Yeah, unless you want to stick around emergency management.
Uh, no thanks.
Thank you, Josh.
I got a lot of emergency management to do, Jefferson County thinks.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we are at judicial. And there's.
So judicial was just changed last year because we had to change in there, what do they call that, what, Heather?
Indigenous?
No, it's the board for the appointed attorneys, so that's, you know, that's correct again.
Yeah.
Yeah, they.
Yeah.
That's a bit of a easy one, right?
Okay. General public transportation. So.
That's the one we got.
Proposed.
No, we're waiting on the grant.
I think it's going to be, I think the grant was around one sixty. So that's going to have to change significantly.
Yeah.
So how do you want to handle that one? What do you think would be the best?
I might do a little research from my end.
Good.
And it's in the general fund, so, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to, but, you know, that, that's flexible.
Right.
General fund, as we adjust these departments, did we talk about the, like personnel services? She texted, I think, but.
Yes.
Okay, so that's not been approved, I guess, it sounds like for the January twenty-fourth.
I didn't think that, yeah.
In regards to what?
The fifty cent rates in July.
Fifty cent rates in January has not been approved, it sounds like.
Well, but you approved that agreement though, if I remember correctly, it had specific dates.
Well, it never approved the whole year because we broke it down each year because that's what we discussed in the original.
Okay.
So we've been doing it every six months and we've been doing it both then, but if we're going to look at a cost level, no matter how good, I mean, we did it all in January, so we can use the actual cost right now.
Reason, reason, reason I'm saying that is that she, Melinda started with the worksheet and all she had is the elected officials and I don't think that's what you were anticipating, was it? It was all employees.
All employees, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Because elected officials has to be changed with the resolution.
Yeah, so what, what would be nice if Melinda could just subtotal, you know, like put the increase, if that's what they approved for the twen, January twenty-fourth, subtotal each of those departments and all I would have to do is go through that worksheet. She had it on there just for elected officials, it looked like, but then she said it wasn't approved on her records, so we want to make sure.
So that would be a question that we want, I mean, we, maybe I would do more, I don't.
Well, how about you plug in the number and then he can come back and say, oh, yeah, we don't have enough for that, or yeah, you do.
So plug in the number as if everybody got the January twenty-fourth, okay?
And then if it comes back and says, this isn't going to work, then we have to.
Yeah.
So when Melinda came in, it was just the July one? I thought, so this is the fifty cent increase for all, for time and full-time employees, is that correct?
That's what it was on the last one, so that's why I said it's been done different on each one, so that'd be a question. I'd just put it into everybody, we're down.
We can.
We could have changed it however.
We can figure it that way, it's just everybody gets a fifty cent like you said and then I can plug it in and then they'll have it. Is that what works?
So then mentally handicapped, that's another one we.
That's just a yellow item appropriation.
Right.
So are we leaving general transportation blank right now?
Yes, I have question marks by, he's going to do a little research to.
Did you get the paperwork that showed what the grant was? Because I think that's what we're going to have to set things at and then have to determine, you know, she's going to, she's going to have to figure out how we're going to need that, what that's going to look like.
The fair seventy-five. Courthouse general, it's a contractual.
I think that's where our, of course, most of our county councils and our.
Which is that?
Or is that for the custodians?
Custodians, that's custodians.
Yeah, there's no change there.
And the county council has its own.
He may have his own section.
Yeah, his own section, yeah.
There's no change in those numbers.
Yeah.
So remind you, we've created, always we're thinking of next budget cycle, right, that.
It's a little tall for. That'll be in the minutes, we'll just get it done.
It's showing sixty right now, but it has no adjustment.
Yeah, sixty-four, fifty-five.
We'll get to it here, it's, it's about three down.
Yeah, so we're good with.
No, you're okay.
Courthouse general numbers, you guys are good with that, there's no change for twenty-four. Land development.
So conservation is in there with us, land is in there with us without line item appropriations.
Computer.
I did find out when I was auditing here, when I sort of especially districts, because we were trying to figure out on computer on some other stuff, and I, I didn't realize, but I guess Sunny does everything but the county attorney and the district court. Does that sound right?
Sure, I don't think it is.
Then there's sure, fair, okay.
I mean, that's the city, what else?
Historical sites and other line item appropriations.
Yeah.
And they, they actually requested to be moved to twenty thousand, so I would say that.
That's what I, right, that's what I was going to suggest, is to up that to twenty.
Up to twenty?
Yep, to plug in, correct.
Um, computer, is there a way we could get some idea? This seems a lot to me from Sunny and just some idea of what all is being included in that versus if we just were to bid out, maybe just doing our own IT person, I mean.
I was asking for one, just asking for itemized invoice essentially, asking for what is services.
Because for that amount, I mean, I would think maybe we could hire in-house IT person for less than that. And I wonder if that's something we need to be looking at.
I'll give my two cents on it if you want it. We had at the big for my zap for years, an IT person and we went to contract because what happens with IT people is they always have a better offer. And we were literally training them every two years. And that's just, that was my experience. Now, I would agree with Heather on this, that when. Now, I would agree with Heather on this, that when I was looking at the audit, like the invoices for this. See, you can look and see right here that contract services, uh, year-to-date, let me check that's right. Are 96. And if you look at his budget, I'm not sure what that 68 is because it's same as last year's. He just did the same as last year's budget, looks like. But when I started checking into this, if you look at the averages back here, that's a chunk, that's a chunk of change.
I'd like to know.
Yeah, because look, commodities, like for-
I think there's something else going under that.
Yeah, like that 170, that's why I don't know if the numbers are put in the right spot. Because if you look back there to the year two from the start, 179 in commodities. And then you look at each line there, I mean, that's quite a bit. I was just asking, uh-
Right.
That's why I was trying to figure out, that included everything, that's when I found out the county attorney and I didn't know about the sheriff, but we were talking about the county attorney and upstairs. So.
Emergency management. Uh, I don't know why that has to have a lot of like in that. But actually-
The equipment, there's equipment and capital.
Emergency management.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what those are.
Uh, they haven't been in the past, they just got, well, there was a small one, I guess, they spent $537 in '22.
Yeah, there's one.
But, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure what the equipment is, they got stuck in there, let's see.
Because I thought about that, uh, we're going to need the sheriff's department to start with.
Right, but maybe they're just trying to ensure that they have that 25 spoken for. Instead of half in the- Passport. This is-
It says, "Equipment purchase will need to replace vehicle in 2025." That's what that 26,000 is.
But that actually goes into, uh, capital approval.
Capital outlet?
Yeah.
Or capital approval, yeah.
So are we taking that out of there?
I mean, if you want to know what's in there, as long as you can live there, there you go, so we've been putting, we've been putting that in the capital.
So move that to the capital approval?
I think so. Everybody's like consistent with what we're doing.
Is that with the 26 and the 2500 or just the 26?
I don't know what the 2500 is for.
Just capital outlets, I don't know what it is.
They probably should all, because I don't think anybody has a capital outlet for.
She said, or they said no change, it's just 2500, same as previous years, I guess.
Yeah, I don't show up for these years.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, they wouldn't, they would just spend, you know, 500 bucks for whatever it was.
Okay, so moving both of those to capital, the other fund?
Right. The next one we got some discussion on, uh, contractual services, that's what comes to us and I remember this is a department, but we've had nothing happen for, out of this all.
I think that includes that part-time person and did, did the appraisers office and economic development each budget a half-time person because they were going to share if we hired?
It's in the personnel, so I can tell that by the thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that number-
I'm talking about the contractual services, because we've never had anything type four, so how are we, that's a question, how do we find that?
In her request, did she give a breakdown of that?
Uh, you don't know.
There was some stuff in there for some fees that come out there, uh, maybe a little bit of time, a bit more $6,000. But we also know that we need to do something to support that program to get that whole department working.
I got the sheet.
There you go.
Um, contract services, oh, yeah, that's like a comp, 60, 60,000, that's a comprehensive plan. 60,000 feasibility stay 30,000. Marketing consultant 15, grant writing 15,000. And business development speaker, I think that's the one you approved, though, wasn't it?
So the comp plan deal will be separated into separate departments. Uh, that would be more of a courthouse deal because of the planning and zoning and all of that. It's just going to have, because that number's never done anything.
Right.
Right.
Right. I think in talking to, talking to her when I, after the meeting, she said she just put in there, you know, all the things she thought that needed to be done.
So, are we breaking that 126 down or are we approving it for here?
She's got it broke down.
Right, but Jay just spoke about covering it in different departments. Are we going to leave it in this department?
This is a, is a general, general fund department.
It's a general fund department?
Where we want to get there, so I think we're going to use somebody to probably leave it there and then figure out where we're going to put it.
Where you're going to put it, yeah.
Because some of that will probably be special overland, some of it will be appraiser.
So we want to use these numbers.
You use the numbers and then once you have more idea, you can put it like where you said appraiser.
The comp plan is going to be very important with what's now been going on with the, with the services.
Has there been one in the past comprehensive plan?
There's one now, but it's probably just-
It's not, it's out of date, I think it's put out of date from 2021 or 2021. You guys want to know?
The council, I don't know if it's seven or not.
Or, uh, 64.
642.
642?
Yeah.
The tax money, you can leave there, but we'll remove that because they won't do the tax on it anymore.
Okay.
But it goes to, uh, contractors, so, yeah, I don't, I mean, we'll still use it, I just won't leave that thing.
I think, don't you have a line for tax there somewhere? I feel like I've seen it somewhere.
Uh, it's in county council, I don't know that we had it anywhere else, because I'm too used to.
It's split out. As a separate.
Line item.
Okay, yeah, it says tax out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll just, we can just pay it out of that.
Right, I mean, it can stay there, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to be county council.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a contract.
The comprehensive plan is dated from 2001 to 2021.
So we definitely need to have it done and did we, is that, I guess?
That'll be the planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning was come out of that budget.
So it should come out of-
The budget, or the planning and zoning.
So that should come out of planning and zoning instead of economic development?
Well, the budget ended there, that's why I said if you leave it in the budget, then you just move it.
Generally, you just move it, yeah.
I'm worried about that.
And is that a quote that Russ, because Russ will be the one doing it, is that?
The whole planning and zoning.
A price we got from him?
That I do not know, if that's a quote she got from him or not. It might have been a rough estimate.
I think it was a rough estimate, but I think it's going to be, uh, that whole group will have those meetings, that planning and zoning board will have those meetings, stuff, you know, but and Russ will be part of that because he's the top.
The comprehensive plan usually takes another study, county study on where it grows that, if you guys want to see that.
Well, he told us last time, it takes six to eight months.
Yeah, absolutely. You might, I'm sorry. Uh, on the tax sale, we've faced a little bit of litigation, possibly like eminent domain. Tax sale, defending a tax sale last year, so what, what do you think about switching that to litigation slash tax sale?
Oh my God, so it's outside council?
Yeah, it's either us or contracting.
So what's the contractual service, so is that, we don't have anything in that, we spent 26,000 dollars this year, is that what you're talking about?
Well, contractual is our contract for general representation to have some county council. Face litigation in the tax sale, even in domain is not something that we can't cover because it's, um, plaintiffs, basically they will be able to be a plaintiff. It's going to be a litigation then from time to time. There was a, I just saw a voucher that there was, it's come out of Hanson's, I don't know if that was broken.
That's the PUC.
There's just catchall types of stuff then.
So does the 642 need to be moved to contractual versus personnel?
Yeah, I think if you move the 642 to contractual, because it is a contract for all employees. And then-
Oh, I see, okay.
The tax sale, you just add litigation slash tax sale and then you, that's kind of a catalog, like you pay it out, so you're okay.
So let me make sure I got this right, so the personnel services under county counselor is zero. Okay, then the 26480 is what's been paid out of contract services for you to date, is that right?
Correct.
That makes it, then that matches up with 64,200?
Yeah, 62.
Yeah, 64.
Yeah, and then change the name tax sale slash, or lit, which way you want to do it, litigation slash tax sale or tax?
Litigation slash, and you could just leave that, it just will enable you to track those expenses better because they'll be paid out. Because I'm not sure where we got the other ones.
Okay.
I'm not going to wish.
Okay. Okeydoke, I got a change.
Good?
Yep.
So auditing and budgeting, county and special district. We show, propose 625.
Ones in the past would have had the- Would have had the, uh, special district budgets in, which would be somewhere around 30, probably 40, somewhere in there. Uh, the contract is, I think off the top of my head, is 375. The, uh, first week, month, two years is not quite complete because of all the stuff that happened in '22. I did not, I didn't bring with me to exit in that time, but the county treasurer that's, we're working on now would be in that engagement. Once those are cleared, what you'd be down to is the budget and the budget, so you'd be down to the budget and the audit. So to the-
Is the contract like 375?
Yeah, 375 and then, uh, I think the budget's like 25, yeah.
And that was like for five years, from two years.
Yeah, to give, lock it in, we just locked it in for five years, no, no price increase.
So the 625 is a good number?
Yeah.
SOS contract services.
I think that's a-
That's a line item appropriation, I think it's done.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I don't remember if they asked for any more than that.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
I don't think they did. Resource Center, 2,000, CASA, no, I'm forgetting.
Trader expense is just like, it's heritage trust when there's some odd, odd in things there, you know? Oh, there, yeah, you were right, there's a task for closure fees, it's a separate line, I'm not sure what the difference is there, is that like postage or mailing? Oh, that might be the, uh, you have to publish it, you have to publish it three times.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm guessing maybe that's the, the publication side of it, the 6701. That gets expensive.
Yeah, because it's meals project and then aging project.
Yeah, those are the two that were just broken out.
Are we wanting to leave those? That's that board I serve on over in Ottawa.
It's the same as proposed for 23, or adopted for 23, so.
Yeah, it used to be included in, uh, senior center, I believe.
Yeah, and I know, we've had lots of discussions on that board about the actual number of people that are actually utilizing the service and so I think that, actually, I could have a meeting there tomorrow. And I might ask them for Osage County numbers because it, I think it has dropped quite a bit on the people that are actually eating at a congregate site versus the amount of where it's being delivered. And I think that'll help us determine if that amount fits with that.
Yeah, and that'd be great because this is an Orwell's line that can be changed, it's not, you know, it's inside the general fund.
I, I think I can look at, I don't know that other counties are doing that amount that much, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's a pretty big jump for me but our highest tier authority.
Yeah, and so I think with the-
Now, some of this, is some of this, uh, you can ask them this too, is some of this like the insurance? See, what happened at Marion County is you have the, you have the senior citizen center and you have the meals that are provided based on a allocation and something about you have to pick up, you have to pick up the, uh, health insurance off of those over the aging part of this. I'm not sure if yours was that way or not, but we, we dropped, we were only covering two, but they had the max in four. And that's what these numbers look almost exactly like Marion County's, we dropped two of them because we never did pay them, we only were paying two of four. But the maximum in the contract was four and that's, that's a chunk of change when you got to start picking up. And that's what I thought some of this was, but I'm not sure, you might ask the, you might ask the board and see.
Well, yeah, it shows that we added 42,000 for meals project in the 23 adopted, which there was nothing-
Well, it actually was in a different, I think it was under courthouse for a while or something and then last year I think we just moved it.
Moved it into there.
Yeah, it used to be in senior and then it got, I think we said in courthouse, and we thought, well, it's better practice in its own line item.
So we're not actually-
So we cut, we cut Marion County, we just cut it in half and they said, well, if they end up funding four in that region, we'll just pick it up as a line item, but why budget if we know, if we haven't paid it ever? So I, I don't, I don't know if this is exactly the same thing or not.
I will see if I can get information on services for our county because I think things have declined in the amount of people actually using them.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the numbers just. Okay, so then-
Then what we do is that's the, that's the general and like the green number there, the 2,531. That has to be updated, that's the unencumbered cash, so what we do is like we show on these sheets, we show each of the departments and then we show what the unencumbered cash is at the end of 23. If it, once it gets adjusted, because you have 22, 23 is still, we still don't know because we, we're still just estimating. And then 24, what it would be at the end of 24, we usually try to stick that in there, buy fund. General being the most important one for sure.
So the 65 is what's been requested?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And I'll go back in once I get that sheet for personnel, I'll just drop those in, so that would-
Which a lot of that, if it's 65 or worse, 63, so the majority of that, we're talking about probably 80,000 or increase because 5,000 of that is going to-
Yeah.
Uh, Ecodivo that we've never had before.
Yeah.
So all the budgets have changed.
Yeah, Ecodivo has another, I mean, your top, that was 227,000, that's a real, that's a middle.
That ended up already happening.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay.
Which I would have spent more time, because that brings account at one time.
If you look at the numbers over there, you look at the total numbers, they, there's one year there, 7 million on total general fund expenditures, you start to left there, you go 5.591, 5.542. 7 million is because of the 739 up there that was employee benefit fund ran out of money. So you see that number right above the 7,87, there it's 739, 650, we had to pay it out of the general fund. And then you have 57, 56, and so what that means is even though you budget 63, they only spent 56. So some of that is cash, you know, is cash, goes into cash carryover.
Which that, uh, employee benefit was that one, we paid all of the vacation that was carried over that was going to be.
That was some of it, uh, but some of it was in September that year, the, the employee benefit fund just ran out of money because of the way, you know, before you readjusted all these health insurance client, I mean, that's why you're paying it, it was that money. because of the way, you know, before you readjusted all these health insurance client, I mean, that's the way you're paying it, it was that money.
On the twenty-two, you've got, the general fund spent five point two.
Five point six?
Well, that's the averages.
Oh, is that the average?
H is the final rate.
Oh, five seventy, I'm not.
Five two. Five two.
Yeah.
But on, on this, it's, this budget status fund, it shows six point two as the total expenditure for the general.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to go back there. Um, I thought all the formulas were set.
Now, this is from May thirtieth.
Yeah, it should be.
So I don't know if there have been adjustments or corrections that maybe things were put in the wrong place, but this shows six-two.
Will.
That from May thirtieth.
Oh, one reason, uh, you're talking about twenty-twos, aren't you? Uh, jail, that was the one, remember jail was not added in there. That's almost nine hundred thousand in the, in that column. It, when it got entered, entered in, uh, it got left out of this worksheet.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so.
It was eight forty-five.
Yeah.
So then the six-two is probably right.
Probably close, yeah, mhm.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so you're not, I mean, you're, just like even talking about, I mean, the general fund's always the one that, you always want to make sure it's halfway that close, uh, but, you know, like even for your talk of revenue neutral or not, if you look at these expenditures, you're, you're staying right in line with uh, what's been spent, you know, in the past.
So we're gonna need to either hurry this process or we're gonna have to agree to pick it up at a different time because we're up against eleven o'clock. We have a few issues left on this agenda, and then we have to have lunch and then emergency management.
How much stuff was left to get through on this call?
It's all the other, it's all the, what I did is I just, I didn't, the way you had kind of been doing it, I just, I went and copied everything over in the last column.
Be careful of the next one, we're, we're, personnel, the number's not gonna be close because it's about six hundred thousand dollars off of personnel.
Okay.
I don't think we're paying a meeting two thousand dollars for the entire department. And personnel, they save that up?
Yeah. Well, that's, there's something wrong there, yeah.
Yeah, that might show why that number go up, so yeah.
Got to enter a zero.
Yeah. Uh, what I would suggest, if it's okay with you, um, we'll get the personnel services updated. Just sent me an email. The one thing I have not talked about here and the treasurer switch over, I don't know if we have that total. But in the other counties, this made a huge difference if the investments were done right. In Pratt, it gave them five hundred thousand dollars in twenty-three and twenty-four because of the interest rate change. Uh, if they invested right, and you'd have other, you have quite a bit, like your capital improvements sitting there and stuff. I can go up, but I don't know. Wanda, yeah, Wanda.
I know Christine had came in here a few weeks ago and kind of talked about the amount of cash and that, about looking at investments.
I talked to her about, I talked to her about there. I said, you know, that's something, you know, if the bank, the local bank does not, and I've had this happen quite a bit this year because rates, banker, I mean, my dad was a banker for fifty-six years, you don't, you don't really just change rate unless someone asks it. The state says that you should get, on idle funds for sure, the ninety-day treasury rate, okay? Uh, the ninety-day treasury rate is, right now, at the municipal investment pool is about five point oh-eight, okay? So I've had some, a city gal where I live is only getting point nine five. So the banker we're having a conversation with, that's a hundred thousand difference in one year about, okay? So here, Jackson County's was, I think theirs was about five hundred thousand that we got to add to the general fund in that one line item. Because of, in, because of the way interest has changed.
So you go talk to somebody?
Yeah, so I go talk to her, I can, I can email you that part, I can get the sheet you got here and look at that. Um, if you're, I mean, you, you've got it in front of you now, you just go through and you make any notes, uh, you know? Because I don't know if I, I mean, if it's okay, I would have to stay till what time? Next time I'd be on?
It wouldn't be today, yeah, it wouldn't be today because twelve-thirty to four-thirty is that emergency management meeting.
What's our fourth, this is our third meeting, the fourth?
Fourth. Well, the third was kind of, I mean, we were gone and, yeah.
So what do we have left to do?
Well, I'm gonna get this cleaned up. I, um, there'll be, there's some things here to clean up, I can see. Get that cleaned up. Carlotta was emailing this morning. We have some, um, stuff at the state of Kansas. We got that, I think, figured out on some grant money. They do it different now, they email, so we got that figured out. Um, I'm, I'm hoping I have this, the audit done in the next month at the most. Uh, have everything, even the treasurer stuff, everything just done. I'm tired, I'm tired of this.
With, I, when I called you the other day?
Yeah.
So all the things that you went over with us, the day last couldn't be here, just all the transactions that they weren't matching at the time when you were gonna work with Michelle and clerk's office.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Carlotta's working on.
And I knew that she was gone and Carlotta was gone.
Yeah.
So that's partially done or not yet?
Yeah, we've worked on it some, but there's just been disconnect, you know, not with you, I'm just saying, it's just been disconnected. And when the treasurer left, that throws another key in it, so now we're. But we'll, we'll get there.
What's our next meeting scheduled for?
We don't have one scheduled right now, but we would, we can't, I mean, it's not, once it gets past the twentieth here with the other, you know, people wanting their rate.
So today's the seventeenth.
Yeah.
And on here, it says honor before July twentieth.
We have to have.
Government bodies notify clerk of intent to exceed. So if we're choosing not to exceed, what are we needing to do?
Nothing. We still, personally, we still send the county clerk, if the, if the government entity does not wish to exceed, we still send them a notice to show them that they're not exceeding. But that's, we're talking to the county clerk. I mean, I don't worry about it on the county as much, but all the others, we go on and send them one, even though they're not exceeding, to show the rate, the total taxes and the meeting date. So the other thing we would have to, uh, set would be the meeting date. That has to be in that notice, uh, even though, I mean, we just put it in there, even though you're not exceeding them, if you want.
But we're not, we don't have that.
So we don't.
You have to have the budget hearing.
Right, budget hearing is.
You don't have to have the revenue neutral rating, yeah. And we wouldn't have to set that today. I don't, I don't think the revenue neutral rate requires that. We just, we just have to have it in on when you're exceeding, but we did, we just hand them all the same way, and then they, and we say, went down to the bottom, it says on the form the state gave us, it just says not exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Just so they know.
All right.
So when do you.
So.
Do we get to do it all?
Do we want to put this for next week and we'll just finish this out?
When will you have?
I will have it updated before next week. We'll have this all updated for what we have here. And then I'll, what I did the other day, if this works, I just go through and, and literally go one, two, three, four. Uh, everything I see in this worksheet, everything I s, um, maybe I can even have another rough draft of the budget. Uh, you would bill to know then what the cash carriers are. I'm not sure about that. I, I'm gonna find out with Carlotta.
So next week, the twenty-fourth, you'll be ready?
Twenty-fourth, uh, yes, I'm available that day, um.
Do you want to come back after that or do you just want to send us what you have?
Well, I'd like to send it ahead of time and let you study it, look at it, and then, because I think our meeting would be a lot more productive.
Well, just, my question is, if he's not available, do we want to just work through the rest of the sheet?
Yeah.
Send that off to him?
Yeah.
And then schedule something?
Like the thirty-first, it'd be the next Monday. Uh, for your gun, okay? The next Monday is what, August?
Seventh.
Seventh?
Well, we want to probably do it, set it up at a later time so it doesn't get interrupted by anything else and just knock it out of your bag.
Yeah. Uh, what I've been, now yours is not as important, but all the others, I've been saying, don't have your meetings until September, uh, because.
So we can, well, clear after August twenty-first?
Yeah.
What do you think, August twenty-first?
So what I would do in between then is hopefully have numbers on twenty-two finalized, have the, uh, this, I'll have, I'll have this done so you can look at it next Monday.
Those ten a.m.'s that work where?
On the twenty-first.
Or nine a.m., sorry.
On the twenty-first.
August twenty-first, yeah.
Yeah.
We just have to have enough time that once all the numbers are plugged in, and we look at the final number, and if we say, okay, we can't do that, then we gotta go back and start reducing.
Right.
If we don't meet together till the twenty-first, how much time do we have till? We have to finalize it.
The thing, the guideline says that if you don't do revenue neutral, it's a typical August twenty-fifth, but I haven't, I, it's a guideline state Kansas says. I've been just fitting them in whenever they can, get them before the September twentieth deadline, which is the R and R deadline, because that's when the clerk, that last week, that's when the clerk certifies, takes the budgets, takes the valuation and makes sure everything works for the treasurer by the first week in October.
Okay.
But, you know, we, we can play, I'm pretty flexible after the twentieth. In fact, if I can get to this sheet, okay, then if we have to have a, you know, a special day, you want to just get it knocked out, I will, I'll do whatever I can.
We'll just, we'll schedule it tentatively for that date, and if we get all the information back sooner and we have time to review it on our own, and then we want to send another meeting, we'll send another meeting. But right now, we move forward.
On the twenty-first at nine a.m.
Yes.
Yeah, but I.
Are we working us ourselves next Monday and finishing out this and then sending it?
I don't know that yet. He's gonna send us the information first. We have to start with the information. If we don't have the information from Scott, then we don't know what to do.
Right, we only made it through the general fund, so what's happening with?
He's gonna update the personnel services. He's got a few things he has.
There's a cleanup there, I can see. There's a couple lines here, and that.
And then we can schedule something for.
Yeah.
Some time previous, prior to meeting with.
We'll, we'll get it done. I'll come, I'll do whatever I have to.
Let's start with the cleanup stuff, send that out to us, and then we'll review it, and then we probably will set a meeting prior to, and then I'll touch base with you again on.
Absolutely.
Sound good?
Sounds great. I am so.
Thank you for your hard work.
No, it's, it, we're, we're.
Yeah.
We're all getting there.
Yeah.
I think we've got a very positive approach. Looking forward now after Friday, we had a great talk over in the treasurer's office.
Good, so, good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, good deal. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, let's go ahead and go with Jackie. Uh, Matt, did, somebody said you're on for eleven?
No, he's not, he's behind me.
Okay, okay. Because I was like, uh.
I just have a purchase order for some tablets. This is grant funded, it's with the I A P four grant.
Hello?
What is this one for?
Thank you, Scott.
Those are warranties for them. A warranty? Yeah, okay. I thought it was other computers, I'm just buying computers. Okay.
To be paid from the I A P four grant. So I will move to approve purchase order three eight two four for the health department to be paid from the I A P four grant for three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-one cents for war, three-year warranties.
And the tablets.
And the tablets.
Yes.
Sorry, the tablets and warranty.
Yep.
Motion's been made seconded. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We should just put a line in our agenda for P O's. And then that way, you don't have to sit and wait.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Clerk.
Yeah, I'm this way.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yeah, and, uh.
I see, I'm gonna give you your papers.
You want, go ahead and come on up and check in. And then Michelle, you just have the tax correction papers and a P O.
Well, I have Linda's new hire, uh, she gave that to me to present to you. We did post a job, didn't have any other applications, so she's hiring that person, but at least we had it open and posted.
Right.
This is office clerk, so this fills names. Because maybe we moved up.
Yeah, yeah.
Mhm. I will motion to approve the hire of Shannon Carlson in the O Sage County Register of Deeds office for office clerk at a rate of fourteen twenty-five per hour.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. No, I'm sorry, that's just me. That's just me.
And then I'm in the executive session with Matt and the commissioner.
I will move to go into fifteen-minute executive session for non-elected personnel with all three commissioners, um, Stephanie Burnett and Matthew Booker. Motion's been made seconded. All in favor? Uh, fifteen minutes. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Want to read something?
Well, I have to read it, I can.
I don't have anything in Braille, sorry. Thank you.
Morning, is that one in?
Yeah. Pretty good. Stay by day, do your stuff, figure it out, caught up.
Yeah.
It's been good. I would say.
That's the only way to do it. One thing at a time, and sometimes problems result in success.
Yes.
Is that wired?
The power outlet is just one.
No, you're not. So just, for some reason, this is dead. So you're not getting a signal here because you're still going wireless. Hold the right, keep on going down below it, and you'll have one. Well, SOP, that's, that's not coming on either. Like, what's the numbers on those, Josh?
Three five, three six.
Thirty-five, thirty-six. Okay, let me go over there and see which one is hot.
Do you want me to try this?
No, 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 no. This should be hot. I mean-
Oh, this is, I saw this earlier. I can print this one. I'm just gonna try that.
Well, I don't know, would you have to take that in copier?
No, because it's, I got me hardwired. He said that this is not-
Thirty-five is hot. So why are you not going on?
Thirty-five is hot, come on.
Come on. Come on. Come on. For some reason, guys, this sucker is not going hot. I mean, seriously.
Don't worry about that.
Okay, just do, make it some cables. Yeah, we're going to do, I'll try to confirm. Let's go ahead and just, just hit it. Hope this works anyways. Just make sure, basically, see if- And something on your laptop, yeah. Cause now it went on. You see that? You see that? It went on. That whole thing's waiting. So it's something, maybe it's this adapter or whatever, I don't know. But we'll try it again there. Okay, so was that the only thing you wanted to put in?
Yeah, I was just testing it.
Okay. So at least we kind of know sort of what-
But that's, that's here.
So let me do this. Let me go ahead and-
You want me to leave this and you work?
Uh, no, let's do this. Let me just make the, let me make thirty-six hot. It could just be thirty-five, that's my head. So let me make thirty-six hot, and then we're coming. Go to the bottom line.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
Yeah, I, 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 when I was leaving, enter code treasure, I won't make a mistake. So, what I was looking for, I don't know, is how much interest today is, and that is how much they receive. So I would, I would talk, and I, you know, is there, you know, there's a, I just want to know about budgeting. Would you have, like, budgeting like the first time? Some of the, please, I just want to look at where it's going to happen, so. Then I would, I would come on the twenty-six maybe. It's okay, anyway, plan same here. Is it, this is six months, okay? And double the six hundred thousand, okay, for twelve months, and probably in that general fund, we've only been budgeting probably fifty thousand on this because it would be at interest rates, okay? So what that means is, let's just say, let's give someone, say a hundred thousand. So if it's five hundred thousand difference, you divide that out at one ninety-four, an hundred dollars, that means it's, it's one ninety-four. So that will be right at two hundred, so we got two and a half mils, and one nine, we don't have four hundred. You see what I'm saying? Now, that's what happened in the other county I was working on. So if we have five hundred, divided by one ninety-four, roughly, we have two point five seven seven mils. And if you want to make a copy of this, that way you can, okay? And that will, so that means I can write those on their sheet. You can just show, you can give that a copy that to everybody, just tell them that that would, this would be at two, wouldn't have been anticipated in the twenty-three budget. Cause interest rate, whatever. I don't know, I'm guessing, I don't have any, uh, I can text you, I can load them on. Go ahead, I can tell you. I'll text you. Okay, so I can run there for security, because they've been answering.
Right.
Okay.
Have a good day. Did you get that to print?
Yeah, the test should be.
Yep. All the test pages?
Yeah.
And I've taken, you don't need these?
I don't need those, but then there should be a, uh, word document that says test.
Yep. So pitch all of these then? I was gonna ask you to, you know, more than, you know, the nice, um, the circle of the bridge, I do, I, one, yeah. Yeah, it's going back around here.
All right, Josh, I think thirty-six is hot.
If, it was hot-
And then it went away.
As soon as I plug it in, it printed.
One minute.
When you're walking there, and then it went away. Like halfway there, so.
Yeah, cause see, you see that? This is showing his wifi.
Well, what I'm saying changed. As soon as I plugged it in, and you walk away, it printed.
So something is, now it looks like the problem is literally on the switch.
Got it.
Is it, it's where it is. So let me try something else. Should only production.
It's odd that we don't have the little laptop, like, you know, that we need.
Yeah. I'm still thinking through stuff.
Turns out, I'm still thinking through stuff to see, maybe just not in different file, but, okay, thank you.
Can I, can I do that? Are you gonna ask?
Motion to extend, where'd you go?
Right here.
Motion to extend, how long? Ten minutes.
Okay.
Sorry? All those in favor? Get that on.
Yeah, and I did-
Are you gonna ask me to do it right now?
I was with you too.
Yeah, I was, let me try to figure out.
And then, uh, he's gotten one every year.
And you're saying that your, your ladies are saying they've never done it before?
Yeah, and I pulled all paperwork out, and, and they're giving them back. I don't see any of that.
Check, no, I'm gonna check.
And I'm actually fine with that. I did reach out to a couple of the survey accountants and asked them, and they said they have done it before, but if it's, I don't know, but they don't, but they don't know whether to make it or not. And there was also some stat, shoot, twenty, it's twenty-seven-two or whatever, I need to find it, pull up some of those to give. Yeah, I can copy that. I didn't find that either, whether it-
I don't see this required. Um, I would just, I don't, it's not required. Yeah, I would say if he's a repeat, just move it. If it hasn't been stacked, then check it in the back. Have you received these?
Yes.
I would just leave it, and then we would adopt it, but we can't, doesn't, I guess. I'll do more research rather than you having that for today. I can email you that, just sort of tell me if I'm wrong.
I just wanted to make sure I was speaking everything else together. I want to make Um, this, I need a Q C two. I will go through that.
If you may, if I could put a place, while I'm making changes, I don't, you need to restart. Do you need to just restart your laptop?
Yeah, I'm gonna go in about minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna make both of them hot, Josh.
Okay, and she wants it all an hour of credit?
She wasn't here, but she's been, yeah. After this, she's been here, I'm sorry.
Wow.
Well, if you had anything, she just want, she wanted a try, but this is all this.
Yeah. I might, what is the, what is it? Is that striped in?
Yeah, it's, it will be official kits.
Based on what?
Well, to either house or not. There's a couple copies, she didn't want copies to get.
All right, Josh, they're both hot.
Yeah.
And they both should be good.
Want to plug it in?
Well, you bring your juice.
All right.
She'll listen to you pressure, Josh, if you want. So until that happens, really. So let me ask you this. Is it okay for me to just go for one now? But, and just, I have to work it on the basis. And Christine had given me so much in orders, unfortunately, she left, so I'm gonna do that, get that down. And then just, I say, you know, the feeling, that's a super strong sound, so it's, it's okay.
Sure, yeah, email the manager.
Yeah.
Email.
Yeah. Maybe they're right off what they need to do, once they see it, I don't know.
Okay. Weird request, I don't understand that.
Well, I'm just gonna, I just will.
Let me just, let's just look and see. All right, you see that right there?
Mm-hmm.
Your hardware, you look good.
Okay.
So there should be no- So, there should be no reason, go ahead and just print something out.
Sure. There it is, awesome, thank you so much.
Have a good one, Josh.
See ya.
You gonna print something else or just the testing?
Uh, that's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, so serum law, we're gonna do today, that thing, I think it'll get shut down as soon as you mention it. I could be wrong. Uh, or you could ask her to come in and explain her rationale. You don't need to be in between it, it's just up to them.
Time's up.
You have been a, sit around for two minutes, we're working.
Uh, we can, Tyler, if you go, okay.
Well, do you wanna do that thing first?
We can, just the, the CMBCC, so.
Yeah, okay.
I just wasn't a hundred percent sure on that. Did you want out? I would like, I don't see. Hold on, you said you had to.
Okay. No action taken in executive session.
I don't, that's why I'm staying around.
I just thought it would make sense to do a lot of this.
What did I say?
So we're getting a deal showing one number, but it's down, the dealer's numbers. Uh, so it's gonna pay out. And this is changing now for some reason, because it should, usually that money goes back into the county general, that one stuff.
So it's a stipend based on a state reimbursement?
Right, and she, they take it at nine fifty a month, or nine forty-five seventy-two a month, and I don't even share one for thirty-five hundred bucks.
Well, because what she's doing is she's taking the balance of the payments.
But she's not gonna be here.
No, and I agree, I'm just, because the question that I have is if it's supposed to be a monthly stipend, paid out monthly. And you look at the ones above, it just shows two dispersments.
Right.
So how is this by statute supposed to be paid out? For sure, there's a statute of some sort or some direction.
Yeah.
First of all.
Somebody should clarify, and I can't, or get contact, or.
Right.
One of you clarify, what's the basis for requests for getting the entirety?
Right.
There could be an explanation. I will do the research, I'm not familiar with it, and I wasn't familiar with the other, there's another, like, I think they get.
So, yes, so I like to sign the other calendars earlier, and I brought up that there's, uh, part of the pay is that plus the stipend. Most of just, most of them show ten thousand dollars, although it's only goes back into their wages, and they pay that amount inside. So that one, I'm paying them up inside, but the problem is, she's wanting to pay them up inside for months, and she's not here.
Yeah, and, and that's an easy question.
Yeah.
That's a hard question.
If she has an explanation for that, then you guys can hear out on that. But whether this can be paid, whether it's plus by statute be paid to the elected official, or it can be basically paid by, and counted into the salary, or you said salary is the question, I don't know. And is it, is it your understanding that it's just treasurer and?
Treasurer, court has an election fund.
But not the treasurer, or not the treasurer D, it's not the county attorney, it's not.
County attorney has.
Oh, no, county attorney has a diverted fund, but that's on state fund, that's just revenue.
So the only question that's on this is that, is that, so if we do this, and that means the new treasurer doesn't get paid for certain, obviously, ten bucks over there or something.
Yeah, and I, it would seem that someone would be paid, if you, the practice has been to pay it monthly for, pro-rata by the time she was here.
Right.
She's already paid for it, but if she has some sort of statutory justification, like somehow that accrues on January first, regardless, then.
So to go back, the way Lucy gets hers, was she took it twice a year, so then, then again, it can't appear.
Well, maybe that's the.
They switched it to the.
All right, I'm.
Maybe I'm not talking to you too long, I guess, at least my.
Yeah, I was just curious if it was a guaranteed upon election or something, you know, kind of a, one of the stipulations, so.
I can do that, anybody, I mean, I can either reach out to her, see the basis, and you guys can decide what you wanna do. Um, I just need contact information. Did, did she have a county cell, same cell?
Colleen is here to go, Colleen is.
Okay. All right, I'm off.
Here, I will send you, oh, that is a cat, so.
My cell number is still the same, if you want.
One of those days, eh?
I'm laughing, I'm waiting about that.
It don't sound like it.
One of those black.
Did you want us to, the mission is that you're very busy at work?
Uh, yeah, they have a public announcement that, uh, we, uh, are expecting our ninth child.
Wow, congratulations.
They gave me that seven, seven percent.
How old are you?
One more, he doesn't actually know what I'm about to talk to.
Kids are fun.
They're a lot of fun.
Lots of work, but they're fun.
It's a blessing to have nine children.
See you guys.
See ya.
I'll report back on the status.
Okay. We're down there, down there, down there, and we're on time, let's go.
Okay, so with this, I'm asking, I'm not familiar with what this is, is this something that came in, came in today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So he's gonna check?
Yeah, he's gonna check the statutory requirements of it, because what she's trying to, what, not that she's doing anything wrong, we don't know. But she's just trying to get a full payout for the remainder of the year. And so we directly need to check statutes and see if that's how it's actually done, or, or kind of some information on it. I don't, I don't know. I, to me, if it's a monthly dispersment, it should be paid out monthly. But if you look in the past, it shows that there was actually two dispersments per year, so I don't know what.
I think the amount is there, it's how they decide to take it.
You can choose which way to take it.
Right. They choose whether to take it monthly or do you take it?
But so does that mean it's, the, it's like a salary and the, you know, and dollars agreed?
Yeah, when you look at, when you look at the paperwork, it shows what the salary is and plus the stipend. So, but there's separate checks, so if we go back, every month, we've written a separate check towards that stipend.
Right, and I agree with, I'm just saying, like, when you sign on, if you're elected, does that mean that that ten thousand's guaranteed, whether you stayed or not?
No.
Oh, I see, so this.
You chose as a cycle, so because it's been done month with, how else would you do it?
Right.
Because the next, the next driver, if you get that one, they don't get it.
Right, right.
Did you bring stamps, by the way, from our kids? Is the meeting this afternoon, is that an open meeting, or what are we doing on that? Since we're all.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I'm saying, I didn't, I didn't RSVP to that.
To what?
To the meeting at twelve-thirty. I didn't RSVP.
So the ones that are, we need to get out of everyone who will be on.
Yeah, so that's why I'm trying to get this.
So I'm gonna make a motion when we recess.
Oh, I'm gonna sign these real quick. You already looked through all this, did you look through all this?
I might have had them taken this morning.
Right, if you wanna review them real quick, make a note, can we just stamp them? Are they all stamped?
And then you all gotta stamp those, bring all of our stamps?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, the tax ones, we do all have to, just the bills.
But if you bring them a stamp, if you're gonna back up the launch, or, that would be a stamp. You probably want to get something deeper.
Right, I remember the figure of four thirty, then I got a council meeting tonight. Hi.
I just wanted to check in and see if there was anything you needed before today.
Love it.
According to my agenda, I just came from Melbourne and quit a month, so. Now I just tracked down those folks to get them to our vision summit, so.
Thanks.
It's coming in August. Anything you need from me, or you know, good to go?
Unless you got a hamburger in the back pocket.
No, just not lying, just trying to catch up.
Yeah, sounds good, good, I just wanted to check in, and thank you.
Bye.
You, uh, I'll make a motion, we're accepting the change orders as presented.
I'll second that motion, motions remain seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed? motion carries. Stamp is right, sign that.
I have stamp?
We do not have stamp, you guys wanna go? Take thirty-minute recess, get you some lunch?
Yep.
All right. Heather, you're knocking here.
Well, what are we doing today?
We got, I mean, we got to do it right now.
Oh, we recessed?
Well, right, that's why I was asking. Jay's hungry.
So do you recesses?
Yes. And then we'll come back and we'll work it in, we'll see what this emergency management deal checks out. In the beginning, we may be able to sit there quietly, review these. And then make a motion, because the meeting's still open.
Exactly. I'll be back.
I'm gonna grab something real quick.
What time are you rude, or are you just?
Of course, yes. No, I appreciate that, but yeah, have at it.
Uh, we'll recess till, at least twelve-thirty, well, let's go five minutes till, so just call it thirty minutes.
What time do you want to start?
Recession for thirty minutes, so it'll be twelve-twenty-five.
So when we get back, if I go through all this, depending on where they're presenting, I may need to sit somewhere else, because it might look rude if I'm up here doing this.
Right.
And I'll try to do that. Um, you'll kind of keep us up to date on the paperwork for, uh, Laura, and she'll just get sworn in as soon as possible, and then, you know, can we start dating for her now, or she's gonna make three weeks?
You know, I have some people that are. Yes, we did, well, TJ. Sure? Yes. So, like, I, I love people helping, and working together, and be the same.
Yeah.
But. Sometimes.